Good morning, everyone. We're gonna go ahead and get started. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Baines. Councilmember Bretafell. Councilmember Capriolio.
Here.
Councilmember Chavez. Councilmember Olivia. Councilmember Brandal.
Here.
President Soria.
Here.
Next, we have the invocation by Pastor Mike Circone of the Well Community Church. So would you please come forward? And I would ask everyone to stand and stay standing for the flag salute.
Bow with me as we pray. Father, we thank you for today. We thank you for the very breath that you've given us as we have woken up this morning. And Lord, we don't take lightly the fact that it is you who gives life. And so, we're grateful for that. We lift up all of the elected officials. We lift up all of those who are governing over us here in the great city of Fresno. We pray for wisdom as they continue with their agenda today, that they would seek the things that are best for our city. Father, we ask that you would guide them, that you would speak through them, that your will would be done. And Father, we thank you for all the ways in which the city is striving to help the injustices of the people who need them most. We pray that each council member would have a sensitivity towards those injustices as they rule. And we pray on behalf of the people that this would be something that would be beneficial long-term to this city. And we know that you are God and we are not. And so, I just pray for wisdom and sensitivity as this meeting continues. We thank you for all that you're doing in Fresno and pray for even more on behalf of our citizens. Thank you, we love you, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Ready salute. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, I have several changes. Starting with the proclamation for June 2018 Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month. Councilmember Capriolio is also a sponsor for that proclamation. Under Item 1O, a resolution should be listed on the agenda to accept the grant funding. Item 1R, it shows subject to mayor's veto, and that's an error. It is not subject to the mayor's veto. The 9 o'clock, Item F. The title should read 2018 to 2019 instead of 2017 to 2018. Item C3 is being continued to 6/28/18. Item 3D has been removed from the agenda by staff. Under Item 3G, upon presentation, Scott Moser will read some corrections into the record. And finally, the 10 o'clock item is being continued to a July meeting by Council Vice President Brandal. And those are all the changes I have.
Great, thank you. Do any councilmembers have any changes to the agenda?
Well, Council President, I just mentioned to the clerk that we're gonna remove the 10 a.m. item. And I just wanna let my colleagues know, I've had a couple of conversations with PG&E, and they just need more time to respond to a letter from the city. So probably in about a month, we'll come back to this. There's nothing time-sensitive about it, so that's why we're pulling that item.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, I will also be actually pulling Item 4A and continue to June 28. This would be the Charter Amendment. We'll just bring it back on the 28th.
Okay.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion approved.
Motion by Councilmember Capriolio, second by Councilmember Brandal. Any opposition? CNN, motion carries 6-0 with Councilmember Olivier absent. Next, we have the consent calendar. And we will go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wish to comment on any items in the consent?
Council President, can I confirm with Council Vice President Brandal that the item is 10 o'clock and not 10:05?
It's the one about the historic building. Is that 10 a.m. or is that?
Okay, that is correct.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great, CNN, we'll bring it back to the dais. Any councilmember?
I would like to... Are we talking about the consent calendar now?
Consent.
Yeah, I'd like to pull Item 1A and 1D, please.
So we're pulling 1A and 1D. Great, I will be pulling Item 1J and 1Q.
Motion to approve the balance of consent calendar.
So there's a motion, and there's a motion by Councilmember Capriolio and a second by Councilmember Brandal. Any opposition? CNN, motion carries 6-0 with Councilmember Olivier absent. Now, we're gonna go to the special presentations, and we have, to kick it off, the proclamation for June 2018 Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month.
As Council President comes down here, we'll start our little ceremony here, and I wanna thank all of you for being here this morning and good morning. Good morning to each and every one of you, and thank you for being here again. So, this is a proclamation that's very close to my heart. I started talking about Alzheimer's disease when I came on board in January of 2013 because my father passed away from Alzheimer's disease. So, it's very close to both of us. We have family members that suffer from this tragic disease that permeates everybody. So we wanna welcome and acknowledge Alzheimer's Awareness Month for our colleagues here. So come up here and join us, please. So, as I said, it's close to me because of my father's passing away, and the saddest thing, the heartbreaking thing, was to see him not able to do the simplest of things. And then as time passed, he did not recognize my mother, who's 91 years old, and still with this, thank goodness. And most tragically for me, my two children are his only grandchildren, and he could not remember who they were or their names. And he tried to kinda fake it, I think, a little bit, but it was apparent that there was something going on up there that wasn't right. The good thing, though, from our family's point of view, is with Alzheimer's patients, they're pain-free. So we could look at my father and say, "He's not suffering, he just can't remember." So that's what got us through this tragic time in our family's history. So unfortunately, Alzheimer's is irreversible. At this moment, it's incurable, and it's a fatal disease. So, as I say, the tragedy of that is it slowly, the deal is it slowly erases the memories. It slowly takes away those simple tasks that we take for granted every day. But, the upside of the program is that we have groups like those standing next to me that are continuing to fight and analyze and seek something that's called a cure for Alzheimer's disease. And you guys are really, we appreciate you so much for that. So, I wanted to thank Valley Caregiver Resource Center, I've worked very close with them on this subject, Alzheimer's Association, UCSF Memory Center. They're gonna host a half-day caregiver and wellness conference on June 30th. So if you have any family members that have dementia or the onset of some of this, that'd be a good thing to attend, and it really educates you on the whole situation, what we can do about it. So with that, I'll turn it over to our Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember Capriolio. I know that you and I, when I came on, the council was an issue that we shared deeply, as he mentioned, is a very personal issue. I think in the past, I've shared my grandmother's picture, who today is not with us anymore. But I think for me, this becomes a little bit more personal because I've seen my mother also get diagnosed with early onset of dementia. And it is a very, very, you know, tough issue to deal with. I think, as Councilmember Capriolio mentioned, all the things that his father went through, my mother's going through, and so it is difficult. And so we wanna encourage folks to participate in the caregiver conference because I think it gives people the opportunity to share and to learn from others who are going through it. In particular, for the Latino community, I think that many times, you know, it's an issue that you don't wanna talk about, or you know, you don't like to ask for help. And so, we see that in our family. I saw it with my grandmother, and you know, I see it today. I try to challenge our family, and so we're a little bit more willing to talk about it and figure out ways to ensure that my mom's quality of life doesn't change. I wanted to share one thing in terms of the Latino population. It is highly, highly affected. There is actually, as part of this conference, it's gonna be in Spanish, which we know there are thousands of caregivers that only speak Spanish, and so I'm glad to see that this conference is also gonna be provided in the Spanish language. Latinos, you know, as I was, we were doing research, Latinos are one and a half more likely to have Alzheimer's or other forms of dementia. So it's a very important issue that we're talking about, that we get educated, that we learn about the resources that are out there available, and the great work that folks, like the folks that have joined us today, continue to do to highlight the issue and to support each other and to find the resources to push so that we can find a cure. Because that's the issue, the funding is not there to continue to do the type of research like there is for other diseases like cancer and so forth. And so, you know, hopefully, one day, we will get there. So today, we're celebrating, obviously, the month of June as Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month. But I think today also is a very special day, June 24th, because it is the day of the Alzheimer's Association, which they call the Longest Day, in which, from sunrise to sunset, teams across the world participate in fundraising activities and raise awareness about Alzheimer's. So what I wanna encourage you guys today, I know you guys all have social media, go to the Alzheimer's Association website, donate, consider donating, because this is an issue that is impacting families across not only our nation, but across the world. And so, it needs our support. And so today, I wanna thank, one, Victoria Reinhold for being here. She's with Family Care, she's a Family Care Associate with Alzheimer's Association. Lori Sharp and also Roger Senna, who have also been working on the issue and on the Alzheimer's Walk. So I'll go ahead and pass it on to you, Victoria.
On behalf of the Alzheimer's Association and those touched by Alzheimer's, we want to thank you for, again, being a face to this disease and caregivers and families, because that's what it takes to talk about it. And I'm a Family Care Associate with the Alzheimer's Association. Many of our programs are free, and people don't know where to turn and don't know how to talk about the issue, and that's what today is about. And we also want to make sure that people are aware that our ultimate vision is a world without Alzheimer's. And until we get there, we do need the support for those living the journey now. But we have many people, those very important to our committee and our outreach, standing right here. They work very hard in advocating and working on fundraising, like our Walk to End Alzheimer's. So that is going to be at Fresno State on September 22nd at 9 a.m. So again, visit ALZ.org, learn about Alzheimer's, learn about warning signs, prevention, services and programs, and how you can connect, because we are just the people standing here. If we all reach out into the community, our own families, we can do the same very thing that those are standing here do today, and can reach so many more people and help them to talk about something and learn about services and programs that maybe they wouldn't if somebody hadn't approached them in a way that is personal to them. So again, thank you very much.
So thank you so much, Victoria, for sharing that. And again, thank you for all the work that you guys do. Thank you, Lori. I know that you're also very active in the community, so thank you for encouraging the community to get involved and to learn about the issue. So would the clerk please read the proclamation for the record?
Whereas Alzheimer's disease is the sixth leading cause of death in the United States and the third leading cause of death in California, and whereas more than 47,152 people are living with Alzheimer's disease or related dementia in our Central Valley, and by 2030, this number is projected to increase by 133,620. And whereas Alzheimer's disease causes people in mid-to-late adulthood to have progressive mental deterioration, and whereas the Alzheimer's Association has its global annual longest day event every year on June 21st to bring awareness of Alzheimer's disease and participate in fundraising activities. The duration of the event symbolizes the challenging journey of those living with the disease and for their caregivers. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Fresno Mayor and City Council does hereby recognize June 21st, 2018, as the longest day, and thus further declare June as Alzheimer and Brain Awareness Month in the City of Fresno.
So now, we're gonna move on to our second proclamation. I'm gonna invite Councilmember Oliver Baines to come on down. In this proclamation, we're recognizing Parks and Recreation, our department. It is Parks and Rec Month as well, and so there's a couple special presentations. Love the Parks Department. You guys have a special place in my heart. So, who do we have? Where's Parvin? And the mayor also is here to join us for a couple special presentations. So every year, we celebrate the importance of our Parks and Recreation Departments. The work they do year-round to keep our community engaged, especially our young people in sports and recreation is really phenomenal. I wanna thank the entire staff, obviously the director, but the entire staff who is making all the programming in our city possible. I've had the pleasure of working with Parks and Rec on several projects in my district, like National Night Out, summer swim lessons at Fresno High and Central High. I'm always happy to support any of the programming that is happening. I know that we partner up a lot with Quigley and the young kids that come there, with Movie Night and other great events. I wanna thank you guys for all the great work that you guys do.
I've been here going back to 2009, when Parks, when the Great Recession was probably the hardest-hit department, I don't think, in the entire city operation. It was, this decimated would not be an overstatement. And I appreciate you, Parvin, coming here and trying to rebuild our parks. And as a kid, I mean, it made a lot to me to go to Holmes Playground, to Romaine, the waiting pool, Roosevelt High School to learn how to swim, not drown myself. And we used to actually play baseball in the alley, if you believe that. There were quite a few broken windows after that, but there weren't places to go. And my school, Jack's Elementary, did open the campus on weekends, and it was nice to go there. So we all know there's major challenges for parks. There's hopefully some efforts going forward to make a difference on that, so congratulations.
Well, I just wanna echo the comments of all my colleagues here. Listen, I was elected in 2010 and took office in 2011, and I can remember, and he's right, during the Great Recession, we were fighting for every dollar for our parks. And to now, to see the conversation revive, the last three or four budget cycles, we've been able to actually put some money back into rebuilding our parks. The Maxi Park Center, I remember when I came here, the Maxi Park Center was closed, and I see some proud folks there now. Took a big effort to get it open. It's now open, it's going, it's working, it's functioning, and it's, again, it's a pride, it's one of the pride and joys. You're gonna hear a great discussion in our city about parks and everything else in the very near future. And the mayor's right, there's a robust discussion about this. We want to be proud of our parks, we want to be proud of them in our city, and we want our parks to be one of the display pieces of the City of Fresno. So I'm honored to be down here this morning and taking place in the proclamation.
Great, thank you. So do you wanna say a couple words? We do have two other things that we're doing. We're doing a check presentation by Bank of America, and then we have a special presentation on Maxi Park.
Well, good morning, Council President and also Mayor, thank you, and also Councilman Baines. This is a great month for us. We're going into July, and for me, this is the significance of parks and what parks really mean to me. As a child growing up in a community center and really learning and seeing the significance of empowerment, and seeing the significance of businessmen, and giving back to the community, and really interacting, you know, with the community-based organizations and understanding what they do every day. And for me, as being a mentor, and still a mentor, you know, for many of our youth, you know, nationwide, and for me, I'm just honored to be here, Mayor and Council, President and Councilmen, and just have an opportunity to work with a phenomenal staff. And I tell you, they push me every, every day. But man, what the energy they bring here, you know, to this city, and I'm just very, very honored to be here. Honored to have Bank of America, and I know Mrs. Kiana, she's here with us, and you know, she's a graduate of Edison High School, and I hope that she's gonna be an engineering major, 'cause the things that she's doing in this community as well. And I think she's gonna be a Fresno City College, I think she's going to Fresno City College this fall. And so just gotta, just kudos to her and kudos to everyone for supporting parks, so thanks a lot.
So we'll read the proclamation at the end. I'll invite Bank of America to come on up, and you guys can do your presentation. And I wanna invite the Parks folks, the Parks team, to come on and join us, all the pirates, come on. 'Cause it's definitely a team.
And listen, as the Parks Pirates are coming down, we gotta just dub that, we gotta put that on your shirts, man. I also wanted to take a moment to make sure that we did not, as we're gonna come down and we're recognizing Parks Month, in a moment, we're gonna do a very special, that's for you, Mayor, a parrot, sit on your shoulder. I'll tell you what, since we have the conductor here, I'll save my remarks so everything's conducted. So we can have, and we have another special moment today, and I wanna take a moment to make sure that I say this publicly for the listening audience and also all of us here in the chambers, we wanna thank Bank of America deeply for your investment and contribution to the Maxi Park Center. You all are good community partners, and we've had some tough discussions over the last couple months, and I've been to the center of that with you all. But I do wanna take a moment to absolutely acknowledge your investment in this community, and this means a lot. Twenty-five thousand dollars here goes a long way. So as a grateful councilmember, as a person that worked very hard to get that center open, believe me, there should be a book written about that, but to get that open, we appreciate the investment, so thank you very much.
So we do have a special presentation. We'll go ahead and pass it on to Bank of America.
Thank you. Let me just say a couple things. I think it was about two months ago that Maurice and I got a call from our national partners, the Foundation, Bank of America Foundation, and they said, "You know, we're getting ready to do a big investment across the country in the places where we do business, to invest in internship programs and lifting, you know, folks up where we do business across the country. Would you guys, we'd like to be able to make it available to your market as well." A lot of times, some of these investments, you know, go to some of the bigger cities across the country. And we said, "We know a place we could go for this, just give us a minute." So we're really thankful for the opportunity to have a great place to partner with the city on bringing this program, pay program, to Fresno. It's really unique, 'cause I think about, if I think about life in general, and I think about the importance of preparation, whether it be in your career, whether it be in your personal life, whether it be relationships, being prepared for the next step in your life is a key part to succeeding. And, you know, this youth job preparation program is just a phenomenal opportunity for us this summer to give back to 25 really great youth, I'm sure we're gonna select for the internship pay program, which I think is the first time it's gonna be paid. You know, these kids... I bet you all 25 of them would do it for free, but it's all the better if they can get paid a little bit for their time along the way. And then the other piece is bringing some financial literacy to 300 to 400, I think, youth as well. And Maurice and I were just talking before we came in here this morning, how, you know, I'm involved with Fresno State, and we talked about how a lot of the Fresno State graduates out of the business schools, sometimes marketing majors, whatever it be, they're not sure about the importance of saving money or building their credit. So getting to kids early and teaching them some of the basics that you can't learn in a book is really important to us, and I know everyone here today. So that's it. Really proud to have the opportunity to partner with the city with the Parks Program. Thank you so much, and we're honored to present the check.
I just wanna add a few words first. I'm extremely grateful. This actually is a surprise to me, 'cause I wasn't sure what the check presentation was gonna go for. If anyone knows, I've been a strong advocate of our youth. You know, we started with our Youth Commission. We, then, the last year, the last two years now, we've sponsored summer paid internships, but the demand is so great. And so I'm so thrilled to see that Bank of America is investing in our kids. And an investment in our kids today is an investment in our future, and so I'm very, very thrilled about that. We put out the announcement of our summer paid internship. In a span of a week and a half, we got over 300 just applications, and we don't have enough spots for them. And so this will help us be able to give those job opportunities, paid opportunities, to our young people. So I'm thrilled that Bank of America has stepped in to support our efforts here, because it complements what you guys do in terms of the youth job prep program. After they go through the job prep program, there's very few paid opportunities, so I'm so thrilled that this, we're creating a pipeline and there will be paid opportunities for them. So thank you so much for your investment. And next, I think we have another special presentation.
So I would like to take time to introduce Mr. Michael Bernhardt, correct? With precision, and he's gonna explain the drawing for us, and obviously, I know Mrs. Kiana's gonna come up and educate us about it as well. Thanks for coming out.
Good morning, everyone. Hi, my name is Michael, and I was just blessed to meet with Irma in January, about this opportunity to shepherd and mentor some students from Edison High School, given the opportunity to know that Maxi Parks received a grant to enlarge the area just south of the facility and to bestow a little bit more for Maxi, being an Olympian in track, to develop something that we could use for physical fitness, running, track, as well as education for low-water use landscape plants and in the garden areas around that. So we met with... So some of the requirements for the park was plenty of shade because a lot of the parks today are, I suppose, lacking shade because especially with now it's summer and just overall, Fresno is really hot and there's not enough shade, so not that many people are interested in going outdoors, so. Yes, this is supposed to be a track, but I made it more like a hiking trail as well, so it's not too intense. It's also relaxing, so if you wanted to be really managing your own health and take everyday runs, you can do that as well in this park. So there are signs directing anyone who's in the park.
Thank you so much. Kiana, congratulations and thank you for putting your own time and volunteering your time to add a little bit more to our parks and so always great to get the community involved, especially the young people. So very, very excited about that. So I think that concludes all our special presentations. Did you want to?
And I'll be quick. I just also, I was whispering to the Parks Director right here, it's a fantastic design. I think that that's awesome. And I'm gonna let the Parks Director say a little bit because, just a little bit of background, there are a couple of other participants that were, that have been involved in this project that aren't here that probably should be acknowledged.
So Edison, obviously, High School, obviously was a great participant, a great partner with us as well. Obviously Precision Engineering and the Parks Department and Yolanda, you know, obviously helped out, you know, with the students and kind of gathered the students together. And so, you know, moving forward, obviously, we're just excited about this, Councilman, and just to have this young lady come out and kind of showcase her talents and her abilities, is, I was looking at it and I could not do that. And so we just applaud her for her efforts, applaud the Parks Department and we just look for more things in parks. Thank you very much.
Great. So just lastly, Clerk, if you could read the proclamation for the record.
Whereas Parks and Recreation Programs are an integral part of our communities throughout this country, including the city of Fresno, and whereas our parks and recreations are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. And whereas Parks and Recreation Programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the preservation, excuse me, in the prevention of chronic disease and improve mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas Parks and Recreation Program increases a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas Parks and Recreations are fundamental, are fundamental to the environment, well-being of our community. And whereas Parks and Natural Recreation Areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, and provide vegetive buffers to the development and produce habitat for the wildlife. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas the city of Fresno recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation Resources, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Fresno that July is recognized as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Fresno and in doing so urges all citizens to use and enjoy its parks, trails, open space, facilities, and recreation opportunities.
Hey, Mayor, you have to leave the parrot. Mayor Brand? Hey, Lee, you gotta leave the parrot, brother.
Those were some great presentations. Now we will move on to the approval of the minutes. Are there any changes to the budget hearing minutes of June 11th and June 12? The minutes from June 14th will be continued to June 28th.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Capriolio, second by Councilmember Brando. Any opposition? Seeing none, motion carries six zero with Councilmember Olivier absent. Next, we will go to Councilmember Reports and Comments. Councilmember Capriolio.
Thank you, Council President. Last Friday, or last week, you were all invited to Eldorado Park for our first picnic and it was a huge success. It was an opportunity for all the people in the neighborhood to come together and get to know each other and the best way to do that is over food. And so Save Mart Center donated 300 chicken breasts for us. Mike and Mike, who are residents, are really fun guys, they did the barbecuing themselves for all the people there and it was really, really a great, a great event. And Detective Danny Kim kind of got this thing started as a new mechanism for people to get together and share, share food and share ideas and just get to know each other. So I want to thank specifically the Fire Department, Fresno County Library, the Police Chaplaincy, PD, and Parks for coming out. So I want to thank everybody for that. And then last night Supervisor Maxey and myself were co-hosting a community meeting. It was a huge, huge meeting. We had a lot of participants. I see some faces over here to my right that were there last night and thank you guys for showing up and being there. We are widening Temperance Avenue and so we had the citizens come out and participate and give us their ideas and thoughts on widening of Temperance Avenue to help the traffic flow out there. So again, we, last night, I wanted to, we asked everyone, I'd like to remind them today, if you have any comments, please submit them to Public Works or to my office or to Supervisor Maxey's office. So thanks to Scott, Jill, Andy, his team at Public Works, Michael and his team from DPU, couldn't have done it without you. So thanks for being there for me. And last, I'd request that we adjourn the meeting in memory of the barber, Nick Paleros, who was the celebrity barber at the airport. If you ever went to the airport, you walked past his shop, he had pictures from The Beatles, Elvis, Frank Sinatra, you name any star, he had done their hair, at least got a photo with him and it's quite, it's quite a thing to see. And so we're working with airports and his family to try to make that a, like a celebrity corner or a little bit of a museum so people can see and share all the memories that we have here in Fresno. And if you look at that, you'd be amazed at the number of people that have come through our community and enjoyed Nick and our airport and the city of Fresno. So our thoughts and prayers are with his family and if we could adjourn the meeting in loving memory of Nick, that'd certainly be appreciated. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Brando.
All right, thank you, Council President. I just wanted to recognize we had another West of 99 meeting last week. I wasn't able to attend, my staff did attend. There were a lot of folks there that are interested in West of 99 and if anybody is watching this over video or, and they live west of 99 and they're concerned about what the city's plans are, I'd love to sit down and talk with them. They can contact my office, I can do one-on-one meetings, but we're very interested in helping people through the transition of expanding the city of Fresno west of 99. I did also want to mention to my colleagues that about a month ago, I know it's been a busy month, but I requested from the city manager the five-year performance review for our commercial waste contractors that is Mid Valley and Republic as well. And so Jerry Schuber provided me with that review. Thank you, Wilma, for letting that happen. And I just reviewed it this week. I've got a meeting with Jerry later today to go over it, make sure I'm seeing the same things that he's seeing, but it's 46 pages long and it's really basically saying that our contractors are doing a great job. And so a lot of great information in that report. So I would just like to say, maybe it's time for us as a body to consider extending that contract and maybe looking into what that would look like. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Great, so no other comments. We will move on to the items that were pulled from the consent calendar. We'll start off with item 1A and that was pulled by Councilmember Brando.
All right, good morning.
Good morning, Scott Tyler, Public Works.
Hey, Scott, really what I wanted to do, because we've been so busy with budget that I haven't been able to sit down and chit chat about this part, so could you give me a quick overview of what we're going to do on this piece of trail?
This, this piece of trail completes a gap, if you will, for the trail. There's portions of it between Blackstone and Valentine, so it's a pretty long stretch. Where you have the trail and some of it goes to the sidewalk because of the frontage road and how close it is. So if you're coming on the west side from Ingram, close to the Walmart parking lot, we're completing a trail segment in that wide planter area between the Herndon Avenue and the frontage road. And so it's a, to city standards, 12-foot wide trail with landscaping. So it does all the improvements for ADA at the intersection and connects to Maroa as well, so there's a connection there. And it goes a little bit further to the east of Maroa to connect so that people in the neighborhood on the north side can access the trail as well.
So from about where Walmart, from the corner of Walmart, down to Maroa, basically? And then will it kind of match the segment of trail over by Harrison? Because that's not too far away. Is it something very similar?
Yes, it's with...
Trees, there's...
Yeah, that includes landscaping, shrubs and stuff like that. We did have to limit some of the size of the trees because of the proximity of FID Pipeline that's underground, so they didn't want any kind of problems with their pipe with roots going too deep.
Okay. And then what is the timeframe for beginning that work and completion?
As soon as we get this awarded, we'll go through the contract process. Typically that could take up about a month and we have a pre-construction, so we're probably less than two months out to start construction. And maybe a month or two for construction.
Thank you, thank you, Scott. And on the other segment of the trail down by Harrison, I think there's one dead tree there, if you guys could check that out. But I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Brando, second by Councilmember Capriolio. Anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. Any opposition? Motion carries six zero with Councilmember Olivier absent.
Hey, Scott, thanks for being there last night. Everybody over there, appreciate it, you guys.
Next item is item 1D.
And Council? Sorry. That was my other one?
Yes, that was your other item that you pulled.
All right, good morning. On this item, this again, almost just like the last item, I just needed a little information. So is this one of the new, big, bright electronic billboards?
Yes, this is Craig Hansen, city of Fresno. This is the one immediately north of the old Fruhoff plant. I think it has the ARCO, it's electronic, so it's, in our affected area, it would be the southernmost of the five billboards that are in the project.
Okay.
Yes. Well, it's, it's sort of in-between, I mean, because you can put the gas prices on there, but it's not, you know, digital display, but you can, you know, change the gas prices on there.
Oh, okay, so this billboard was out at Herndon and 99. Is that right? We're moving a billboard.
So there's, well, so there's a billboard on 99 just north of Fruhoff. It's a double-sided board. One side is, is just traditional billboard, the other side, northbound, has the ARCO gas prices, so they can change those. Okay, the agreement is that they will take that billboard down. There is a billboard out by the hotel near the Costco at Herndon and 41. Currently going eastbound, there's just one side on it. So the agreement is that we will permit them to put a board on the other side going westbound as part of the mitigation to take care of this thing.
Okay, and, but it will be one of the new electronic billboards that we've, we're beginning to roll out in the city?
This one is separate from that master contract. The other four billboards and veterans are part of that master contract. This was sort of a hybrid, if you will.
Okay, all right, well, and then what is the timeframe for that move?
What we're shooting for is we hope that they will be able to get permits by the end of this month, if not early next month. We would like to have them take care of this by the first of October. There is one lingering issue right now and that is on the westbound traffic where that part of the parking lot below Costco is. There's some trees and foliage there, so Outfront's negotiating with the owner of the shopping center to see about clipping some vegetation there so they have some view. So last we talked with them, that was an outstanding issue that they were working on. But hopefully that should not preclude us by October having that billboard down and they'll have their second side up and we'll be done with that.
And Craig, how about the other billboards? Have we already figured out where they're going and when they're going to be? I kind of enjoy them, I like them, so is that game plan that we all voted on?
Are you talking about the master sign agreement with Outfront?
Yeah, I think so.
We're working through it. Laura in my office is working on it. We had some constraints with Caltrans and freeway designations. We also had constraints with some of the properties that were identified because of the land and water conservation funds at a couple of our, I think it was Al-Radka and Woodward, but we're moving forward with, I know MSC for locations. So, and we just got the go-ahead from Caltrans just a few weeks ago.
All right, thank you, thank you.
And in a recent discussion with Mr. Morrison, I think that there was some thought that maybe by about March or so, we would have those other four taken care of and then that's it as far as the land part of this goes.
That would complete that agreement. Perfect. Thank you for the update, Craig. I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Councilmember Brando, a second by Councilmember Capriolio. Anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. Any opposition? Motion carries six zero with Councilmember Olivier absent. Next item is item 1J and I'm actually the one that pulled the item. Just to have a couple of questions, Mike, and I know that my staff sent you the questions earlier, but I just wanted to make sure that we put the information on the record. So we are purchasing this property, which is an auto body repair shop. A preliminary environmental report has been done on the project?
That's correct. There was a Phase One environmental site assessment. It also recommended some Phase Two work.
What is, what are those things that were recommended?
Phase Two work was soil borings and soil sampling. That was completed and there were no further recommendations after that.
No further recommendations. And the only question I ask, because given that it is an auto body shop, we want to make sure, right, that...
Right, it's former auto body shop.
Yeah. And then the other thing, what are the current conditions of the building, the parking lot and just the property? and just the property as a whole?
The property's been used for a number of years. The plan right now is for the Water Division to utilize it for additional parking of city equipment, storage of equipment, so the Water Division yard is pretty tight, it's fully utilized. And this additional property, as is, would provide some additional room just to move into some additional flexibility. So, planning to utilize the building and generate some additional parking space, as is.
And I've taken, just from the pictures, taken a look at the property, it looks a little bit rundown, given that the city of Fresno is gonna be the owner of the property, because we are going, you know, making sure that we're holding property owners accountable in terms of blight and so forth. Are there funds in the budget, or in this next year's budget, to ensure that we're upkeeping the building? I don't know if we're putting the city logo, but even if we're not, and it's our property, I just want to make sure that it doesn't contribute to blight in the community.
Right. The, you know, some of the facilities in the existing water yard are probably the same age. There are funds in place to continue to maintain those facilities going forward, and so we will look at this property as well. If there are some improvements, we will continue to make those in terms of making sure the roof and the structure is in good condition. In terms of, in terms of blight, yeah, that's something we can, we can look at and trying to spruce up the property as needed. Water Division does maintain a facilities fund for those types of projects.
I would, that would be my recommendation, that, you know, I will go ahead and make a motion today, but I think that if you guys have some maintenance dollars, that you guys do spruce up the property so that at least it, if we're taking it over, we're gonna be the owners, that it doesn't look to run down.
Okay.
So I'll go ahead and make a motion. Second by Councilmember Oliver Baines. We'll go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none, we do have a motion and a second. Any opposition? Great motion carries six-zero with Councilmember Olivier absent. Next item that I pulled was item 1Q, and I will actually have to recuse myself because there's a conflict. So, where's my Vice President? Mr. Vice President, can you chair the meeting as I step out? Because I do have a conflict.
What item were we talking about? 1Q.
I don't know, okay, good, Laura.
Good morning, Council. Laura Gloria, Deputy City Manager. The item is a First Amendment to, Amendment to the Disposition and Development Agreement between the city of Fresno and Neuen Frejer Capital for the South Stadium Project. Staff is available, as well as the developer team, if there's any additional questions.
Yeah, and I don't know exactly why Councilmember Soria pulled this item, so why don't you give us a quick overview of what this issue's about, so everybody can be on the same page?
Councilmember Brendel?
Yeah.
She pulled the item because she had a conflict. I don't think there was, but if you're, want Laura to do a little presentation, she can.
Okay. Okay, we do have Councilman Baines.
Well, I know, I know, well, I was letting Laura go through the presentation, but yeah, you can give an overview, Laura, that's fine.
Sure.
It's in my district, and then, you can give an overview.
Let's do it.
So the South Stadium Project includes the property on Fulton and Inyo, which was recently, the property was recently demolished in order to make way for this project. So the First Amendment gives it a time extension in order to allow to continue to get additional funding, as well as continue to make progress on the project. We recently received about 1.8 million dollars from the San Joaquin Valley Air District, Pollution Control Air District, for the project, so it's making its strides as far as continuing that funding. And the extension will align with the AHSE program, which currently also has some funding in the program. So, in essence, it's really just an extension to continue to do the work that we've been doing thus far.
Yeah, that seemed pretty clear. We'll go out to the public. Any members of the public would like to talk about this item? Now's the time? If not, we'll bring it back to Council. Councilman Brettafeld.
My district.
Oh, I don't think he's gonna make a motion, he's gonna just ask a question.
Well...
You were?
Can I ask the first question?
Go for it.
This is my district. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to ask really quickly, I know this project has several phases that it comes with. Where are we at with the other phases? I know this is, and I see one of the developers here, and I know Laura, if you know, this first phase, second phase, where does this, how does this start us with the rest of the phasing of the project?
Sure, so this is Phase One. Phase Two was the Gottschalks Building, which, that phase actually expired in the DDA. Phase Three...
Now, why did that expire?
So, the original DDA allowed the developer some timeframes to either come forward with some performance schedules, a performa, certain things to show that they were continuing to move forward in developing that property. Gottschalks was one of the properties that was originally initiated in that process, that timeline ran out. We did also allow for some additional city manager discretion-approved extensions, which also ran out. So this DDA, this amendment does not extend that extension. It does extend the extension for the Berkeley Building, which was also a part of the original DDA. So, this amendment in itself only extends those two phases. Phase One, which is the Fulton and Inyo property, and Phase, I believe is Four, for the Berkeley Building, to continue to, again, make strides on that project.
So on the Gottschalks Building, what are we, what are we gonna do? What are we gonna do with that?
We actually have, sorry, Laura, I didn't want to cut Laura off. We actually are working, we have an active offer right now on the Gottschalks Building that we're working through. Somebody who believes they can come in and get that building up and active. And so, we're working through that offer right now with our real estate brokers.
All right. And so, we have, let me ask the developer really quick, Laura. Memet, you mind coming down? Because this is one of the first, this is gonna be one of our first major projects in downtown since the opening of the Fulton Street. I kind of want to talk about the, I'm glad we're starting, and I'm glad this came up today, and I'm glad Council President pulled it, because I actually had some questions. I've been pretty involved in this project, and I know, glad you guys got the additional credits from the airboard, but I'm really interested in the bigger, in the entire project, all the several phases that you guys plan. Can you guys give us an update on that, and how this, how moving forward today is gonna help you?
Well, since I'm the oldest of the group, I get the honor of speaking. We started on this project in 2014, if, I was looking through my files, and the original RFP was in September of 2014, where we were awarded the five phases of the project, which the numbers have moved around quite a bit, but essentially it was the apartments that we're asking for the extension on. It's the Berkeley Building that we're also asking for the extension. We did have the southern half of the Gottschalks Building, which we were working on and would like to continue to work on. And then also the property we call Wright Field, which is the 1.5-acre parking lot that the Grizzlies currently use. The fifth phase was the northern portion of the Gottschalks Building. That wasn't owned by the city, so it really, there was nothing. But, you know, we have asked staff, and we really appreciate all of staff's efforts, but we've asked, continued to ask, to be able to work on the other phases, because we'd like to see a master planned project, rather than a piecemeal project.
Now, the way we're doing it right now doesn't allow for a master planned project?
Well, it's, there really isn't a master, we don't have control of the other properties, so to say that we're master planning it would not be appropriate. It's not like the Palm Bluffs project that I did, where we were able to master plan the entire park. Now, it's being segmented into the two portions that we control, and we're hearing that there's an offer on the Gottschalks Building now.
And Wilma, I remember when this project first came forth, they, this was part of, the Gottschalks Building was a part of their initial project. I only remember because I helped read the RFP years ago.
Yeah, absolutely. It was, as Laura said, it was a part of the original RFP. There were certain milestones and things that needed to be achieved that weren't. We've been working closely with the developer, and have discussed with them, I mean, the city is, can't subsidize the part of the project, et cetera, and so we've just decided to move on with certain phases of the project, removing the Gottschalks portion. But that expired, I believe, the Gottschalks portion actually expired, and Laura may be able to answer this, maybe last June, the end of June of 2017, I believe.
And Memet, so today, I mean, listen, I think we're not gonna have a problem moving this part of the conversation forward today, but I am interested, and this is one of the first times that I've had the opportunity to hear, you know, get an update on this project in council chambers about where you guys are at. So, where are we at with the other phases? I mean, as we do this phase, there are what, five, there are what, six or seven phases to this project?
Well, there's, there were five initially.
Five, okay.
What I really would consider four, because one was not, was not controlled or owned by the RDA or the city. We have submitted plans on what we call the Park, which is the fifty-four units plus the commercial component on Inyo and Fulton to the city. Those plans are being reviewed now. You know, this recent airboard grant helps us bridge the gap. There still is a gap in the project. Our goal is to be able to find a value engineer and remove the gap, and get it to a point where it is, the return is what we expect. The other portion, which I don't even remember the numbers anymore, the Berkeley Building, we've had contractors go through, we've had a remedial company go through. I do have a budget to basically rehab that building, to convert it into a ground floor food hall, and the second level would be communal offices, along the lines of what Bitwise is doing. We continue to work on that. It's a very expensive retrofit. I can share the numbers later, once we have those fine tuned, but just the demolition and the remediation is about three-quarters of a million dollars.
Okay. So the, and I guess I'm just making sure the rest of the project and the phases is on par? We're moving in the right direction, or?
Well, we're, I mean, we're moving on the projects we control. We can't do anything more about projects or the properties that we don't control.
Okay, all right, Council Vice President, I'll let you, I know some of the council members are queued up, so I'll let them ask some questions, but I'll make a motion to approve what we're doing today, for now.
Second.
All right.
I think Terrence would like to say something?
I just want to make sure everybody was clear. Thank you, Councilmember Baines. Part of the reason that Gottschalk was pulled is because they wanted us to do a public market, which did not pencil, and we kept saying that in the beginning. So we asked to purchase the property, the same as we asked to purchase the Berkeley Building. So...
So you all asked to buy the Gottschalks Building from us?
Yes, because we felt like the public market was not gonna work. So that's why I'm kind of surprised that there was not a RFP if someone else is gonna purchase it. I think we should have had the first right, since we are the master developer for South Stadium.
Wilma?
So, again, and Laura can speak to all the details if we need to get into them, but the property did go through surplus land act requirements. We were approached, and based upon that, we were approached after that, by somebody who was willing to make a full offer at the appraised value, which was a lot greater than any, there was no formal offer ever provided to the city by Terrence and Memet that I can recall. And if so, this is the only offer we've ever been given for a full, full appraised value. And so, looking at...
What did they want to use it for?
It's confidential right now. We've been asked not to disclose that, but we do think it is a very compatible use with what we're trying to do along Fulton.
Well, that has to come to council at some point. And I'll just, let me just say this, because you did say it's confidential, I don't want to get too far in that. However, I will say this, I don't know if it went through a full process, but I will be very interested to see what the use is, and if it's compatible with, obviously, this development, too. I mean, you all have made a pretty significant investment in that part of the city. You could, some of the first money in, if I remember correctly. So I would be interested to make sure that whatever we're doing fits into what is already going, is already going there, so. And I don't know if you guys ever made a formal offer?
We was dealing with the ex-city manager, Bruce Rudd, and what Bruce had told us is that they're gonna get an appraisal, and after they get the appraisal, that's when we was gonna make that offer. We had no idea that the appraisal was complete, and that's the same as Berkeley Building. They said they was gonna get appraisal on that also. So we've just been waiting. We, we did make the verbal, and we said, hey, we want to purchase both buildings, but they said they had to go get an appraisal, and it has to go through a RFP process, the same as they said on the property on H Street. So we knew that, so we're just waiting for the process.
And we've had, we've had many meetings with both developers discussing the process. They knew that we were taking out the Gottschalks Building as part of this development agreement. We know that we're continuing their exclusive rights on the Berkeley Building, again, and we have done everything we possibly can to help them move forward with this phase of the Park at Inyo and Fulton, which is before you now, which still is a gap. And so, so we've done everything that we needed, we were required to do under the DDA, the offer that is on the table. Like I said, full appraised value, and on top of that, it is a compatible use, consistent with the downtown code, the whole bit, so.
But you guys did want to purchase that? I'm understanding that you guys wanted to make an offer on the Gottschalks Building?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, that's good to know. So, again, I'll let my colleagues answer some questions, but thank you for that information.
Councilmember Brettafeld. Yeah, I just want to get some answers on the overall project when it's completed. I mean, how long do you think this is gonna take before this actual project is viable and we see it and it's completed? What kind of timeline projections do you have, Memet or Terrence?
We have a, we have a timeline that we've submitted to staff and also to HCD. We did request an extension, which coincides with the DDA extension, but we're looking at completion of construction, I believe, in...
In 2020.
2020, so starting next year, and this is the first phase, which is the Park, completing that in mid-2020. The Berkeley Building is an existing building, it's adaptive reuse. We could start on that at any point in time. Obviously, we have to make sure the economics work, and that's the drill that we're going through now. It's also being reviewed for historical status. We want to make sure we understand what, if any, impact that has on our development moving forward.
Okay, and the goal is to have this be kind of a mixed-use development by the stadium?
That's what it's always been. It's been residential, commercial, entertainment-related, so that's the ultimate goal.
Okay, and this project ultimately, how much do you think this will cost, whenever all is said and done?
Well, the apartments themselves, or what we call the Park, is just shy of 18 million dollars. I have some numbers, preliminary budget numbers for the Berkeley Building. We're fine tuning, and I'd rather not give the construction numbers, but it's substantial.
Okay, okay, that's all I need to know, thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, you done, Gary? All right. Luis, did you have any? All right. Memet, while you guys are here, good morning. Remember when you guys gave me a tour?
Yes.
Of the, you know, of every, the different things that you want to do? I need to almost be clarified, what parts, and I have no problem with the extension today, by the way, that's helpful, and I want to be helpful. So what parts are now currently kind of off the table, and which parts are you still really actively pursuing?
What we're actively pursuing, what we're requesting the extension on the DDA, is the Park, which is the apartments at Inyo and Fulton, that back into, look into the baseball park.
Ah, perfect, I just asked Oliver that question. So those are, when we voted, we had heard about looking down on the stadium was a very fantastic...
Yes, yes.
Idea.
Awesome.
Okay, that, that part is still on the table?
It is, yes.
Okay, okay, good deal. The food court is a little sketchy, is that what you're saying?
The public market, which was the Gottschalks Building, we went through, we all went through the city and everybody else, an extensive evaluation. The ultimate number to do that was staggering, and without, you know, high degrees of public participation, there just was no way to make that economically viable.
Okay, all right.
But we did look at other options.
Okay, you did look at other uses for that building?
Yes, yes.
All right. I think really council's very interested hearing this, you know, because we're, we feel like we're invested with you guys in a way, you know? Because we're invested in our downtown. So I'm gonna be favorable myself on these extensions today, but Wilma, I almost think we need a workshop, once we get through budget, once everybody gets back from vacation, could we get a workshop on some of the other pieces of downtown that we need to be caught up on?
Absolutely. We're happy, we're happy to do that. And I can talk to you about the content of the workshop, just to make sure that it's everything that you're requesting, but I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, perfect, perfect. Thank you guys.
Can I introduce my partner, too?
Yeah.
He's kind of standing off here to the side. This is Jeff Eisenstadt. Jeff and I have known each other for over twenty years, and he worked, works in Los Angeles, lives in Los Angeles, but has brought his consultants and his experience here, so we're very fortunate to have him as a part of the team.
Right on, nice to meet you, Jeff.
Welcome, Jeff.
All right. I believe we have a motion and a second, and is there any opposition? Then it passes five to zero with Council President Soria and Councilman Olivier absent absent today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steph.
Council Vice President, can we move the, uh, page twelve, ten oh five item next? It's the, uh, something near, dear to my heart for the last four to five years on LED light fixtures, and we have the PG&E people here and everybody's-
Yeah.
I can see them, they're ready to go. We've been waiting a long time, so if we could do that, that'd be great.
We'll hear the ten oh five item at this time.
Good morning, Council President, council members and colleagues. I'm Scott Mosher, Public Works Director, and I'm very pleased to, uh, present the ten oh five item, uh, regarding, uh, citywide replacement of high-pressure sodium streetlight fixtures, uh, with LED fixtures, more energy efficient. Uh, we have our, uh, partners from PG&E, uh, here for that, and, uh, I wanted to start, uh, with the presentation, uh, that was in your, uh, council packets with the item, and, uh, just talk a little bit about streetlights. All right, uh, so streetlights are really a, a very large asset, uh, for the city of Fresno. We have approximately forty-three thousand streetlights in the system. Uh, they vary in wattage from about seventy watts up to some that are two hundred plus, uh, depending upon the situation, neighborhood lights, major street lighting, and, um, all told, those represent a three-point-two-million-dollar, uh, annual energy bill, and that's just for the street lighting, those are not for other facilities. So that is the power bill, uh, that we pay, and that is paid for, uh, through the Public Works budget, uh, it is all paid for by gas tax, uh, revenues that we receive. Uh, wanted to be sure to highlight for the council that about two and a half years ago, we did change our standards, uh, to LED fixtures, so everything new, uh, all new neighborhoods are LED, any capital improvement project, uh, any development that has frontage improvements, lighting, it's all LED, so we do have that benefit. Um, but our older lights, again, about ninety-seven percent, uh, citywide, are these less efficient high-pressure sodium. And, and of course LED, uh, I believe council, uh, many in the public are very familiar with the savings opportunities, uh, LED really has a cost of about half of, uh, the older high-pressure sodium. So, uh, with the, uh, previous city administration, uh, we are taking a, uh, pay-as-you-go approach for street lighting, meaning that, uh, any grant funds we could obtain, um, any dollars that we could manage to put into streetlight conversions for LED, uh, we would do so, and so we took advantage of, uh, one-on-bill finance, uh, phase one, uh, two-hundred-fifty-thousand dollars, we were able to do eight-hundred-eighty-seven lights throughout the city. We managed that, uh, project, we put together a bid package, bid it out, competitive process, uh, did the construction management, and you can see the cost, two-hundred-ninety-four-thousand dollars for those eight-hundred-eighty-seven lights. Uh, we went into our, uh, CFD elevens, the newer tracts, where the street lighting, the power bill, the maintenance is part of that special tax. We looked at, uh, that return on investment in under seven years, benefit to the homeowners in those neighborhoods, so again, we did three-hundred-sixty lights there. Um, of course, council's approved a handful of CDBG projects to enhance lighting in neighborhoods, and also has approved a federal grant, uh, for eight arterial corridors, three thousand lights. So, uh, without this package, we are moving forward with a handful, but, uh, even with that, that really leaves thirty-five thousand lights, uh, in the city, Cobra Head-type fixtures, where, uh, there is no pay-as-you-go plan, nothing, uh, would have been in the five-year to address those. The savings would be one-point-six-million dollars with LED fixtures, and, uh, I'm pleased to present today what we're talking about, uh, is, uh, a special offer from PG&E, uh, that's not available through the California Public Utilities Commission for zero percent on-bill financing, uh, with a turnkey approach for PG&E to do, um, the project management, the installation, uh, they'll do a lot of the inspection, we will have oversight of that as a city, um, that they'll be hiring construction contractors and doing that work. Uh, under on-bill financing, the savings pays for that, and let me go back to, we talked about the previous adminis, city administration had been going with the pay-as-you-go. Uh, one caveat is under state regulations, gas tax funding cannot be used for loan repayments or any debt service without two-thirds voter approval. That's a very high bar to get over, that's an expensive special ballot, uh, type of approach. So with that, um, uh, Mayor, Mayor Brand, the administration, working with our city manager's office, uh, we're able to put together a budget which does a funding swap with the city, within the city budget wherein our Measure C flexible, uh, revenues would be utilized for that loan repayment. On on-bill financing, again, we talked about three-point-two-million dollars of a total energy bill, and about half of that would, the, the bill would go down, uh, to one-point-six million. On-bill financing would have the other half of our current bill, one-point-six, be, be the loan repayment, um, and as we get through here, we're talking about a six-and-a-half-year return on investment. So, to the city, expense, revenue, uh, very neutral, but the funding swap occurs. Um, and in the council's budget deliberations, we've talked about, um, that gas tax savings going into, uh, seven-week concrete crew and other types of street repairs and that work, to still move forward on that. Um, again, we talked about Measure C, uh, total cost of this project would be ten-point-two million dollars and with a six-point-five-year return on investment. So starting, once that, uh, period is over, six-and-a-half years, the city of Fresno would see an ongoing savings of one-point-six-million dollars in today's dollars. That would increase depending on what the energy bills do in future years. What does that savings turn into? That's gas tax savings that can do more, uh, sidewalk repairs, curb gutter repairs, uh, paving projects, uh, perhaps, uh, industrial infrastructure-type development, the, the potential uses are, are really endless, uh, for that ongoing savings in the future. Uh, why we're looking at, we looked at PG&E, again, we have experience, uh, as a city of having done our own projects, where we bid these out, we put together, again, bid, uh, plans, bid packages, and manage the construction. With PG, PG&E, uh, it represents a three-point-four-million-dollar savings in the project cost. So again, ten-point-two versus thirteen-point-six if we did this on our own. On our own, would there be a benefit to the city? Definitely, but it's a much longer return on investment and a much greater cost to the taxpayers. Uh, so with that three-point-four-million-dollar savings with PG&E, um, under this turnkey Uh, just going over benefits, again, we could talk about pure energy savings and good use of, uh, tax, taxpayer dollars and being good stewards, but also LED would be, uh, greatly improved lighting, uh, where we have done these pilot projects, uh, for example, uh, the Eldorado Park neighborhood, uh, Yocomi, some of our major arterials like Peach Avenue. The feedback we've gotten from, uh, the public and also our police department, uh, police captains, sergeants in those areas, has been a tremendous benefit, uh, just the, uh, the color of that lighting, ability to, uh, recognize for the police department, for public safety, recognize, uh, individuals, colors of cars, uh, you name it, uh, it's, it's a marked, marked improvement. Um, and also the replacement of those lights, because we have, uh, scaled back, uh, our budget, uh, for streetlight replacement, we're doing all reactive-type replacement, meaning the lights we have, they're all past their seven-year service life, um, today. So we would basically reset that clock on thirty-five thousand lights and have all, uh, brand-new LED. So that begs one question, would there be a maintenance savings with that? Yes, there would, on changing, changing bulbs, that reactive type of work. However, I want to highlight two challenges. One is, uh, locations without power in the city. Uh, that, we have several hundred locations where the streetlights today do not have power. It's an electrical issue, um, some are where the lights were installed, uh, around the seventies and eighties with direct burial, there's no conduit to pull, uh, the wire through, just the wires buried, buried in the ground. And in somewhere in that, uh, wiring, there's a ground fault. So, uh, those are very expensive to, uh, to replace, we've been bypassing many. Uh, recently, near Fashion Fair, uh, we restored lighting to about, uh, twelve lights, uh, that was near a hundred-thousand dollars worth of work. What we would do is, uh, redeploy a couple of our electricians, uh, who normally would change lights, into these major repairs so we can address those and members of the public who've been waiting, uh, many years for them to re, uh, restore. Uh, lastly, uh, we have, uh, two-thousand-eight-hundred decorative lights, they're the post-top, uh, type of lights, uh, often a green, uh, type of color, um, very good-looking lights. The technology is not quite there for a cost-effective, uh, replacement of those with LED. I'm confident it will get there in a survey with PG&E and also with other peer cities.
Those are on the decorative lights you're speaking to?
Yes, Council President, uh, decorative lights. So what we do, uh, recommendation, they are not part of the proposed, uh, turnkey replacement project, uh, we would tackle that separately, but our, our resources for maintenance would be freed up a bit to do a better job in, uh, replacing those lights as they burn out more quickly. So we'll be able to invest more on restoring those lights. The other reason for not, uh, LED at this time is the post-top lights with just a straight-up LED replacement, uh, without an entire conversion kit, they have a lot of glare. Uh, the LED lighting down at that lower level, about ten-foot height, has much more glare. Uh, up in the air, uh, thirty-plus feet, um, LEDs work great, but down low, there's a little more to do with the globes and the lighting, um, and as such, that's not, uh, part of this project yet. Uh, with that, I'd like to, uh, introduce, uh, Assistant Director Robert Anderson, just to briefly cover, uh, the actions, uh, before you, and then, um, also, uh, wanted to mention that our colleagues from PG&E are here and, uh, able to answer questions as well.
Good morning, Council President, council members, city manager, Robert Anderson, from the Public Works Department. As Scott mentioned, today we bring before you a project that will not only save the city millions of dollars in energy savings, but will also replace aging streetlights that are past their useful life expectancy. I am here to request that council adopt a resolution to approve a finance agreement and energy service, services contract with Pacific Gas and Electric Company for implementation of certain energy-related services, adopt a finding of categorical exemption pursuant to Class One, Section fifteen-three-oh-one-C of the California Environmental Quality Act, approval of six agreements with PG&E in the total amount of ten-million-two-hundred-thirty-seven-thousand-sixty-two dollars for a zero-interest rate, general on-bill financing. And finally, the approval of a master services agreement at the, and also the associated work order with PG&E for the turnkey services to replace the high-pressure sodium streetlights with the LED fixtures throughout the city of Fresno. On May thirtieth of this year, the city clerk and the Business Journal published a notice that allows for the city to sole-source with PG&E the turnkey installation process. This follows the California State Government Code, Section forty-two-seventeen-point-one requirements. The turnkey program will allow for the PG&E to perform the installation process with crew fixtures that they have purchased through a requirements contract that they perform themselves. The installation costs will include PG&E inspection and project management services. Our city of Fresno personnel will also be monitoring installation, especially the traffic control aspects of the project. PG&E has agreed to use local manpower when needed from the local home and also use local traffic control companies. If approved by council, these documents will allow for the city to begin the replacement project as early as September of this year and be completed within approximately twelve to sixteen months from that date. As Scott mentioned, we also have today in our audience representatives from PG&E who have been involved with this project, and themselves and myself will be available for any questions that you may have. Uh, this ends staff presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So we'll go out to the public on this item. At this moment, I have, actually, first I'll call, um, I believe John Sofrenic. Is John here? In the back? If you want to add anything, I know you've been working on, on the project from the PG&E's end.
Good morning, um, my name's John Sofrenic, I'm the manager of First Street and Outdoor Lighting for Pacific Gas and Electric Company. Um, I've been conducting, um, LED conversions for both cities and counties statewide, uh, as well as we're almost at the end of completing all of our conversions as well, um, for the lights that we actually own and maintain. Um, started this project back in, uh, two thousand nine, uh, I now work for Electric Distribution, um, handling the streetlight projects, uh, for both, uh, for cities as well as, uh, for PG&E. Um, done about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand of these things since two thousand nine, and looking forward to this project in the city of Fresno. And I'll leave it up to you for any questions.
Perfect, thank you. If any of my colleagues have any questions in particular, um, we'll go ahead and call you up then.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much, John. So we'll go out to the public, I do have a couple cards on this item. First, I'll call Eric Zakorski. Are you here? Sorry, I don't know, I think I butchered your last name. So if you can state your name and your address for the record, you will have three minutes.
Sure, the, the cards are slightly out of order. Uh, my name's Alex Rizel, I'm one of the other, one of the other cards. Uh, our address is at two-twenty Bay Shore, uh, San Francisco, California. Uh, I'm here from Tanco Street Lighting, we are a sole-focused ESCO, working exclusively in municipal streetlight projects around the country. In front of you is a packet of information, myself and three other presenters we'll be speaking on now. Tanco not only has converted more than a four-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand lights around the country, working with over a hundred-and-twenty different municipalities, and those are streetlight-only contracts. Here within the state of California, we've worked with more than forty municipalities, converting over two-hundred-thousand streetlights. Tanco's process in the diagram on page one includes a comprehensive streetlighting audit, data reconciliation to help shore up billing issues, and a unique photometric design specific to the needs of Fresno. We would also handle all material procurement, installation, construction management, commissioning of the system, which we would welcome city staff to review, as well as all of the rebate and tariff change paperwork on behalf of the city. Uh, on page two is a comprehensive list of all forty of our, uh, clients here within the state, we would ask that you call any of them to ask for their experience with Tanco. Uh, on the left of page one are two of our largest references here within the state, Ranch Kukamanga and Modesto. Modesto, similar to Morgan Hill, was in a similar situation to the city of Fresno right now, being offered a project by another vendor, in one case PG&E, that was more expensive, offered fewer savings over the next twenty years, and a less comprehensive scope of work in a longer completion period time. Tanco has worked with the city of Fresno over the last ten years, providing material and fixture rebuild, but more importantly, the previous item in the presentation, the conversion of three-hundred-fifty lights was done by us with a local subcontractor, completed on time and on budget. Back in April of earlier this year, uh, myself and our president, Jason Tanco, met with Andrew Minelli and another member of Public Works, providing a proposal for what Tanco's project might look like in comparison to that of another recent PG&E once seen in Bakersfield. Uh, those summary sheets can be found on pages three and four of your packet, but the highlighting information is on the bottom of page one, that Tanco's offer is two-point-two million dollars cheaper than that of PG&E's, and offers fifteen million in additional savings to the city over the next twenty years. That accounts for a three-point-seven-nine-percent financing offer from GE Capital, and puts money in the city's pockets starting year one, making it cash flow positive. Tanco's offer also includes the conversion of an additional twenty-eight-hundred post-top lights, which city staff mentioned was not included within the offer at this time. Tanco's offer is based on a twenty-eighteen RFP from the city of Santa Clarita, just a little bit south of here, that went out to public bid for the conversion of seventeen-thousand-two-hundred streetlights, which Tanco was awarded. Tanco is a cost-effective, well-vetted, and experienced contractor that can help get this project done, and we would ask that you consider what's going to be said by the other, uh, speakers here, and consider an alternative to this project.
Thank you. Next, next I have, is it, is Jason going to speak, or who's next? Are you with him?
Yes, my name's Eric Zakorski.
Oh, Eric, okay, perfect.
Our address is eleven-five-oh-five Dublin-
Our address is 11505 Dublin Boulevard, and that's Dublin, California. So basically, I just want to quickly review a comparison of the products that are being recommended by PG&E and those that are being recommended by Tanco. PG&E is recommending a Cree fixture, whereas Tanco would be recommending the implementation of a GE fixture. When looking at Graybar, we sell lighting from hundreds of different manufacturers. We've converted over a half a million streetlights across the United States using a vast array of manufacturers to do so. When you look at GE and Cree, side by side, there's some noticeable discrepancies between these two fixtures. There's three things that really need to be considered when you're purchasing streetlights. That's the efficacy of the fixture, the photometry or the distribution of light, and the composition of that fixture. When looking at GE in comparison to Cree, the GE fixture is 11% more efficient than the Cree fixture. That's pretty significant when you're converting over 35,000 streetlights. Secondly, the photometry, the distribution of light, when you look at page five of the packet that was provided, you can see that the Cree distribution of light is a much more concentrated source than that of the GE, which is a much more uniform distribution. By also looking at that Cree, the photometry for the Cree, you notice there's a lot of backlight. This can cause for light pollution into residences or storefronts, and in order to correct this action, you typically have to install a backlight shield, which is another component that needs to be purchased and installed. And lastly, the composition of the fixture. The Cree composite, the Cree fixture that's being recommended is a fixture that's made out of plastic, bulk molding compound, and the GE fixture is made out of an anodized aluminum material. The plastic is inherent for retaining heat, whereas the GE anodized aluminum materials got thermals built in to retract that heat in, that's specifically important in warm environments like Fresno. So in summary, essentially, you know, there's three things here. The efficacy of the fixture, which the GE fixture is more efficient, the distribution of light, and lastly, the composition of the fixture. So overall, the, the GE fixture in our recommendation is a better choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jason Tanco.
My name's Pete Porty with GE Lighting. That was the fourth card that went on there.
Sorry.
Yep.
They're a different order.
So I'm Pete Porty. I'm, I'm with GE Lighting. I'm a 35-year employee. I've spent the last 14 years managing all the streetlighting, changeout products in the western United States for all utilities and municipalities. As part of the Tanco lighting proposal, you'll find a draft and a term sheet from GE Capital Finance. The draft offers $0 upfront outline with the five-year terms, conditions, with economics for the project. GE government financing has provided over $1 billion of tax-exempt transactions for energy-related projects such as these. We've reviewed the Tanco proposal and the city of Fresno credit rating, and should you consider moving forward, we would consummate a pre-approved term sheet within 10 days of agreement. GE has over 100 years of experience in streetlighting. GE has already provided the 360-unit project that you have, so we have experience with provided product with, with no issues with the city. We're an approved vendor by the city, and GE has partnered with Tanco Lighting on dozens of projects in California and across the United States, all with outstanding success. A list of references of these projects are included in the proposal. When reviewing these types of projects with cities, we highly recommend that the city consider the 15- to 20-year total lifecycle cost of ownership when trying to select a vendor such as this. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we have, is it Jason Tanco? Thank you. If you can state your name, address for the record, you'll have three minutes.
My name is Jason Tanco. I'm the president of Tanco Lighting, and my address is 928 Broderick Street in San Francisco. I'm here to give some additional information about the Santa Clarita contract that's being presented as part of our general offer. It's the base for all the pricing that you have received. It's our most aggressive and our best offer that we've ever had. The numbers are included on pages eight, nine, and 10 of the packet, and this covers a comprehensive streetlight replacement. As was mentioned before, this is for 17,000 fixtures, and this cost actually represents lower cost than on even much larger projects like Phoenix, Arizona, which was for 100,000 streetlights. You are currently using sole-source law with the PG&E offer. The city can keep the sole-source award process and award it to anyone for energy savings under California state law. You can see the California state law that I'm referencing on pages 11 through 15. Tanco's been awarded multiple sole-source contracts in the state of California, and some went to council to award to another vendor like PG&E, similar to this, and then wound up being switched to us during these, these types of appeals. Fullerton, Modesto, Morgan Hill, Sonoma, Vallejo, Simi Valley, these are all sole-source awards contracts that have executed this California state law. Our project will be to audit everything. We will convert all of the high-pressure sodium streetlight fixtures, and that will be done for our offer, which is just under $8 million. We are converting more lights than PG&E because we will be addressing the 2,800 post-top fixtures. We will hire local auditors for the audit, and we'll be investing a lot of money into the community through this project. Tanco is a neutral partner. We're a consultant qualified to represent the city and make sure you get the best savings and long-term costs because we are not the utility. PG, PG&E's sole purpose is to return shareholder wealth. That's not a problem. That's just what investor-owned companies do. However, the concern is about, about this is that with them offering an energy efficiency project is that they have a conflict of interest as they are the ones charging you for energy and at the same time making recommendations of how to, how to save, how to save money and energy. What we have is a cash flow positive offer, making money for the city with more efficient, better-built fixtures, made in the USA, and even with some interest on the loan, we are, we have a financially better offer, saving the city $17 million over the next 20 years with no money upfront. Everything we have handed and provided out in the, in the packets are facts. It's all based up, all backed up in writing. We recommend that this item be sent back to Public Works and that they return to council with our offer for you to review and approve, writing on the Santa Clarita contract and using, utilizing sole-source law. I'm grateful for the opportunity to present this to you, and I'm very grateful and honored to have served the city in the past. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Those are all the cards that I have, but is there anyone else in the public who wish to comment on this item? CNN will bring it back to the dais. Councilmember Baines.
Hello. Okay. Hey, Scott. So, all right, so let me, let me just say, first of all, I, I think that this is a fantastic presentation, and we get the benefits. We sat in a meeting and we talked about it. So we, I, I think the benefits are clear. We know we're going to be able to save a lot of money. The rate of return is great, being able to have, you know, recouped our entire investment in six and a half years and, and the like. We, we know that. I think that there's no argument that we should be moving the city to LED lighting. I've been there for a long time. As Wilma knows, probably my first year here, I was wondering why we didn't have the whole city on LED lights. So, so I don't have any issue with, with the item from that standpoint. But I think you know that the main question I had during our discussion was about where the workforce is going to come from. And I remember we left that meeting with some, I, I had some specific questions, and someone was supposed to get back to me with some specific answers, and no one has. And as I shared with the city manager and all my colleagues, and I shared it with you, and I shared it with PG&E, I think that if we're going to make this conversion, it's a $10 million expenditure, and we don't know where the workforce is coming from, shame on us for not asking. And I did not get anything back from you. I did not get anything back from anyone from that matter as to say, hey, this is how we're going to satisfy Councilmember Baines's workforce question. Maybe it wasn't important at the time, I don't know, but it's a big deal to me. So do we have any answers on that?
Yes, Council, we did include two things in the report. One is that PG&E has committed for any, all additional hires needed for the work to come from the local IBW Hall.
The local Hall?
Yes, the local Hall. And then they have also committed that all of the traffic control work would all be done locally as well. So those, those are really the two components of that. To go beyond that with some additional percentage or requirement in our discussions with PG&E would really add to the project cost.
Let me just make sure I understand that they're going to, you said additional work? Who can, who can?
Yes, and maybe, maybe best answered by PG&E.
Okay.
Since they'd be leading that effort.
Thank you. As far as the contractors are concerned, we have one contractor that's IBW that lives here in Fresno. The work in terms of staging would be local workforce. So site hasn't been picked yet, but how we stage for all the material, both incoming and outgoing, would be local. We would have somewhere between seven and 10 crews actually working. We would have runners that would actually pick up the old fixtures and deliver new fixtures. That would be local. Traffic control, as mentioned, that would be coming from local as well.
And the local, the local IB, local 100 would be the?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that was really my question, and no one, that was my, the first series of questions. But I do, where does Scott go? Because, thank you for answering that question. I'm glad that you, someone should have probably told me, Scott probably should have told me, but that way I would not have, I wouldn't have asked that question. But I think that Scott and Wilma, I think you've answered my questions on that front.
Okay, thank you.
But I do want to, I do want to talk a little bit, Scott, about what we just heard from Tanco Lighting. And I don't know if some of this is going to be for Wilma. Did you guys, so I know we, I know we, we did sole-source, but did, did we review other proposals or anything of that nature? Did you guys review this Tanco, the Tanco proposal?
Yes, we did. And also, let me add, Tanco's fine company, and as representative men, representatives mentioned, they did complete a project in our Community Facilities District 11 to, to handle, let's see, 360 lights. That was done. And in reviewing it, we engaged also our city controller, Mike Lima. We had a number of conversations with the I-Bank, with California Energy Commission, and also City Manager's Office took, had a lot of scrutiny with the proposal, looking at it both ways. A big component of this really is the 0% financing, and then also PG&E's successful negotiation through their streetlight require, the actual product requirements contract, that yields that additional $3.4 million savings. GE mentioned a loan of well over 3%. We even looked at numbers that through the I-Bank would be 3% financing, and even an Energy Commission potential loan of up to $3 million. It's a very competitive process. All told, even with that at, let's say, a net 2.5% financing, that's our comparison of 2.5% financing with the city and managing it and all the costs we have with that versus PG&E, and that's $3.4 million. I'd also want to add that we looked at our comparable cities, and in each case, they went through a similar analysis investigation, and a number of other agencies all reached the same conclusion, that PG&E's package was the best deal, including City of Bakersfield is undergoing that work now, City of San Jose, City and County of San Francisco, State of California, California State University Fresno, and Fresno Unified School District, all reached the same conclusion that the PG&E turnkey was the best, the best deal.
I'm sorry, Council President mentioned something in my ear. So when Tanco says here that they're $2.2 million cheaper, that's, that in fact is not true?
We do not, we do not believe that is true, again, considering the 0% financing and the cost PG&E had. I would add also, on the project that Tanco did complete, our cost, net cost on that all in was $388 per light, and this project with PG&E were, I don't have that number right in front of me, but I know we're well under 300. We're at $288 per light. So between, when we compare the project Tanco completed versus what we have with PG&E, it's $100 per light cheaper, just by comparison.
Okay, that's all the questions I have now, Council President.
So if there are any other questions, I know that some of the, there were some additional concerns in terms of some of the procurement. I'd like to request that we continue the item and try to get some more answers about our procurement process. I know Brandon attempted to make a procurement workshop for us, coupled, I think, last week, and we cut, kind of cut you off. I think that would, may have been helpful in this process. So if we could continue the item, and we can bring it back maybe next week on the 28th?
I'd like to, I'd like to ask PG&E or Scott about timing, and is there any problem with delaying with the 0% on-bill financing or anything like that?
Good morning. My name is Isaiah S. Frank, I'm the senior account manager for PG&E Fresno office. As far as the on-bill financing, there will not be any concerns. It still be available on the table. Obviously, the longer it takes, you know, the city will be missing the opportunity to implement this project, but the on-bill financing will be available still next week.
Perfect, yeah. I, I don't think we'd lose much in a week. So, thank you. So we'll go ahead and continue the item, given that there's no opposition to, to the continuation until next week. So we'll go on. Thank you so much, everyone, for, for the presentation. Next, we will go to our timed item, which was for 1010 Scheduled Communication. We have a special appearance by Gonzalo Arambula to discuss the damage done to his wheelchair by fax driver while on city bus. Mr. Arambula, if you could state your name and address for the record, you will have three minutes.
Thank you, Mrs. Minella. First, upfront, please don't direct me or send me with a person who really ignored the whole thing and almost kind of bullied me, telling me that it's completely wrong what I'm trying to get fixed on my, my wheelchairs. It's already been damaged, three of the wheelchairs from January until today. It seems like this is kind of bureaucracy, then either Fox or HR here in the city hall, they're the ones that use it to ignore my, my whole issue, which is one of the things I like to address. The, should it be, start cutting off that bureaucracy and address the whole issue at this time, because I'm homeless by my parole officer decision and also wrongfully discharged from the program the same way by the bureaucracy of the parole officers, officers. So I need, I needed this whole thing, being ignored, my case is completely wrong against me and against many people. Also, I did pay taxes for 19 years to this estate. I think I deserve, deserve to, to be, to be paid attention. Also, at this time, I would like to address an issue then it was discussed in this city council room, is regarding the marijuana taxes and marijuana processes. I would like to remember the whole city council and also the city of Fresno, which is there behind me. The, the same way the alcohol that was prohibited and it become legal, the same way the marijuana need to become legal is as soon as possible, because I have earliest osteoporosis in my knees and my right ankle, and I know some of the process or things they extracted from the marijuana, it does, will benefit me. At this time, it don't do it, but it will do it any minute then they discover some of the other parts from the marijuana. I would like to you to try and fasten up this process on, on that issue, if it is possible, please. At this time, I will address the city council that has belonged to, to my district on either a Monday or Tuesday, because I cannot be mind wheelchairs in a yard sales or in a trip to the stores just for entertainment from your office of HR. So, please do something.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, next we will go on to timed item, 10, the 10:30 timed item, which is sponsored by Councilmember Brettafield.
Thank you. Council, this is an item to add Article 22 to the municipal code to allow at-risk development. And basically, this allows any residential, commercial, industrial development to proceed if they meet a couple of criteria. One, if their plans are substantially acceptable and they submit a completed application for a building permit, then they can get an at-risk permit. And what that does is it allows them to move forward with all of their building, still meeting all of the same specifications, still paying all the same fees, but moving the, the projects along, whether it's a residential home, an Amazon building, a Deli Delicious building, they get to move it forward and don't get bogged down in the bureaucracy. Obviously, that enhances the economic development for industrial and commercial and residential. It builds up our tax base in a quicker way, generates sales taxes, property taxes, most importantly, makes us all more user and business friendly at, at the city of Fresno. So, I think it's a very good effort at doing that. I want to thank Councilmembers Brandow and Chavez. This was a part of some things we were working on together with what we called money-back guarantee, which we, we had some disagreements about on overall, but this was a part of that and I think this is something that really needs to move forward. I also want to thank the mayor and his administration. We went over this together, this at-risk development. He's made comments that have clearly improved this and made it more effective and so I'm, I'm grateful to the mayor. And mayor, did, did you have any comments or anything you wanted to, to add about this?
That's, that's fine. Yes, I want to thank Councilman Brettafield for coming to my office, meeting with my staff to work out the details on the at-risk development. It's definitely a move in the right direction to make it easier for developments to move along, particularly those that are experienced, where they can have model homes, where not duplicating things. And it's consistent with my business-friendly Fresno priority, my administration, so I fully support your measure.
Thank you. Thank you. And I also received a letter from the Building Industry Association from Mike Prandini, which you may have seen supporting this. And I think Dennis Gabe is here also. Mr. Gabe, did you wanna speak on, on this issue?
President, members of the council, Dennis Gabe, 7815 North Palm Avenue, Fresno. I am here in two capacities before you this morning. One is as a Vice President of Century Communities, a home builder. And secondly, as the past Chairman of the Board of Directors of the Building Industry Association of Fresno and Derrick Counties, representing its commercial, residential, and industrial builders and their affiliated contractors and tradespeople. The city has for many years issued at-risk development permits and we've been grateful for that because it has accelerated building and economic activity. However, the process has not always been uniform. What the ordinance proposed before you today does is bring uniformity and codify that uniformity to the rules in the city of Fresno and gives the building industry greater assurances of what those rules are. We're delighted that the author, Councilmember Brettafield, and Mayor Brand have agreed and we believe, as they do, that this would enhance the business-friendly posture of the city of Fresno. The ordinance in the final analysis would benefit, interestingly, city government, members of the public, and the building industry. And it doesn't get much better than that. So, with that, we would urge the adoption of the ordinance. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. And I'd just like to make a motion to, to approve.
I'll second that. Oh, sorry. I didn't know.
So, there's a motion by Councilmember Brettafield, a second by Councilmember Chavez. Is there anyone else in the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none. No one else is punched up? Yeah, you're punched. Yeah, no, we're back. Councilmember Brandow.
Hey, Councilman Brettafield, good job on this. I think it really helps out there in the building industry. You know, it keeps Fresno competitive with some of our neighboring communities that are doing this. And it kinda streamlines and kinda cleans up the process. Like is mentioned, some of this has been done before, but streamlining it, cleaning it up a little bit, I think it was the right time for that. We're going into a great building phase and we need every tool, every hand on deck to make sure that we're very competitive and I think this is a great tool. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. So, there is a motion and a second. The screen is clear. Is there any opposition? Seeing none. Motion carries 5-0 with Councilmember Baines and Councilmember Olivier absent. So, we'll go ahead and go to general administration. And just so that I make an announcement in terms of the budget motions, if anyone is here, those budget motions won't be taken until this afternoon, so after 1:30. Right now, we'll go ahead and continue with general administration. Item 3A is a resolution of the 70th Amendment to the Annual Appropriation Resolution to approve a 1.9 to the State Revolving Fund Low Interest Loan Fund for the Frye and Kern Canal Pipeline Project.
Good morning. Mike Carball, Department of Public Utilities. This item is a request to approve the 70th Amendment to the Annual Appropriation Resolution Number 2017-165 to appropriate $1,950,000 to the State Revolving Fund Low Interest Loan Fund for the Frye and Kern Canal Pipeline Project. Appropriations will allow the Water Division to utilize available SRF low-interest loan funds for contract change orders 1 through 7, as well as staff, time, and construction management costs during fiscal year 18. All change order costs have been reviewed and approved by the Capital Projects Oversight Board and the appropriations are within the original budget allocation for the water program. I'll be available for any questions. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
So, there's a motion and a second. We'll go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none. We do have a motion and a second. The screen is clear. Any opposition? Seeing none. Motion carries 5-0. Before I continue on to the general, in the general administration, I skipped a couple different hearings, sorry. The first one is the scheduled hearing, 9:00 AM, joint meeting of the Fresno Revitalization Corporation and the city of Fresno in its capacity as housing successor to the redevelopment agency. Marlene.
Thank you. The primary source of FY 1819 income for, for the housing successor is from its 20% share of the city agency loan repayment, followed by loan proceeds and from loan repayments from those rehabs that were done over many years. This year's budget reflects a carryover amount of about $5.5 million and anticipates income of $1,438,390 from the 20% share I mentioned. And loan repayment in the, excuse me, loan proceeds in the amount of $600,000 and around 50 in loan repayment. The total carryover and income totals $7,212,000. From this amount, $6,235,750 is encumbered for approved committed projects, primarily the Blackstone McKinley project with the Lingo's, the Annabelle Elm with the self-help housing. And also, you may recall recently, a single-family infill project at 329 College is also included. Regarding expenditures, SB 341 allows 2% of the assets for administration. In our case, that's $618,000. However, we budgeted less than that, $500,000, of which 200 is for personnel services and 300 for operation and maintenance. And in our case, operation and maintenance means environmental cleanup, weed abatement, affordable housing covenant, monitoring, and so forth. Also, under SB 341, there's a deadline to initiate housing development on the real property that we own. We have about 16 lots remaining. We've greatly advanced, we've shown great progress in this effort. Again, Annabelle Elm would be one notable one. It's about eight acres and several others. This year's balance of program income is $309,759 and it will be targeted to initiate affordable housing on those remaining parcels owned by the successor. And we will be looking to families that meet the eligible income requirements. You'll recall that those are very stringent requirements. At least 30% of, of program income must be spent on housing affordable to extremely low-income households and no more than 20% can be spent on households earning between 60 and 80%. And 80% is the top, the top income group permitted. We are and aim to continue to be in compliance with that balance. Going forward, there remains only about four years, possibly five, of city loan repayment and that will be about $800,000 to $900,000 per year. So, that in effect is the remaining life expectancy. I've also included in the packet the housing asset transfer budget. You'll recall in February 2014, we went to the California court and they ruled in our favor that funds to carry out housing enforceable obligations would remain under the successor's jurisdiction. And that's the encumbered and set aside projects, committed projects, enforceable obligations, excuse me. These funds are set aside to implement those and long-term commitments. Lastly, the annual report is attached and it contains detailed information for the reporting period of fiscal year 1617 in 13 areas, including a description of expenditures and the status of our compliance and so forth. The primary purpose for this report is to enable the state to monitor us and monitor our compliance. So, that document is posted on our website. That concludes the report. If you have questions, happy to answer.
Thank you, Marlene. We'll go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wish to comment on this hearing? Seeing none. I'll bring it back to the dais. Looks like no one's punched up. I just wanna, one, thank you, Marlene, for taking the time and really briefing me on everything that is pending and how the budget works for this fiscal year. I also just wanna make some remarks about the importance of the little bit of money that we have left because it makes a tremendous difference in the city of Fresno. And so, in particular, I wanna point to the Lingo development, which this council supported, has supported over the last, it's been a, I think, a three-and-a-half-year effort. And I know that our offices worked really hard in the last few years to put a packet together to be able to fill those gaps. And we just got some really good news earlier this week. Next Thursday, the Strategic Growth Council will be voting on projects that were recommended and the Lingo development, which is the Blackstone and McKinley project, is on the recommended list. That's gonna be a $35 million investment coming to the city of Fresno. 88 affordable housing units, so we know that 88 families in the city of Fresno will have quality affordable housing and I'm very excited about it. And as part of the $35 million, there's gonna be, I believe, over $2 million of off-site improvements that are happening in the nearby neighborhoods, which is super, super excited. So, I just wanna take the time to recognize the folks that have worked on that for the last three-and-a-half years, thank the mayor for being supportive of it. And just an example of how, when we put a little bit of dollars and when we have skin in the game, the leverage is just, you know, it has multiplied here and we're gonna be seeing, you know, $35 million come into our community. So, I just wanted to, you know, make those comments on the record and thank you, Marlene. So, with that, I'll go ahead and make the motion. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Chavez. Any opposition? Seeing none. The motion carries 5-0 with Councilmember Olivier, Councilmember Baines, and Councilmember Next, we go to item 3B in the general administration. It's an item pertaining to the Orange Avenue pavement, oh, am I looking at the wrong one? Pavement overlay from California Avenue to Jensen Avenue. Am I in the right? No. Hold on, I'm looking at the wrong one. Oh, sorry. Yes. Item 3B, it's to approve a 7th Amendment to the Professional Consultant Agreement with CH2M Hill Engineers for an amount not to exceed $7,400,000 for fiscal year 2019 Program Management Services, Public Utilities.
Good morning. Mike Carball, Public Utilities. Back in March, provided an update on the Recharge Fresno Program and the startup plan for the Southeast Surface Water Treatment Facility. As planned, the treatment facility is now in the commissioning phase and staff are working closely with the state to obtain the operating permit for the, for the facility. Overall, the program is on schedule to achieve full-scale operation of the treatment facility this month and on budget as committed to the community during the rate-setting process during 2015. Our success in implementing the program has been significantly due to the support and services of CH2M as part of our integrated program management team. CH2M has broad expert project management, technical expertise, community relations, and construction management resources. And working together, the combined city and CH2M team continues to utilize project management processes, systems, and tools to effectively deliver this large infrastructure program. In fiscal year 19, our combined water and wastewater CIP expenditures are projected to total 162 million as we finalize construction of the treatment facility, we complete the regional transmission main segments B and C, we continue to expand the recycled water pipelines in the southwest portion of the city. We've worked with CH2M to negotiate the value of this contract amendment to a level we recommend is appropriate to support the, the remaining project activity as we finalize and wind down the major projects and complete the planned recycled water pipelines. Contract funding is within the authorized $429.1 million rate plan and incorporated into the proposed fiscal year 19 CIP budget. It is recommended the city council approve Amendment Number 7 to the Professional Consultant Agreement with CH2M for an amount not to exceed $7,450,000 for fiscal year 19 Program Management Services, an extension of the agreement through the term of October 31st, 2019. I'd like to thank the council for their continued support of the program. I'll be available for any questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. We'll go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none. We'll bring it back to the dais.
Motion to approve.
And there's a motion and there's a second by Councilmember Chavez. I did just wanna make some comments. I was actually the council member that delayed this item because I wanted more time with Mike and the staff to ask a number of questions. And I will tell you guys that this, this morning, I won't be able to support this item. As many of you guys know, for me, the whole Recharge Fresno, which is, you know, 400-plus million dollars that we voted on back early, I think it was my first, most difficult vote that I had to take to say that we were gonna raise rates to the ratepayers back in February. So, a month into after being sworn in, I had to take a tough vote and it wasn't easy. I was originally a no vote and it took time for me to come back around and support the project because of the residents that I represent and because of this type of project that it was initially. Over the course of conversations, we were able to scale back the dollars and ensure that there would be additional cost savings. One of the things that I stressed during the time that I made comments in support of it was that I wanted to find every mechanism possible to ensure that we had cost savings so that, one, we would extend the period of time before going back to ask the ratepayer for additional dollars. And so, well, this is a consultant agreement. I know we've had, you know, a very extensive conversation. I wanna thank you guys for, for coming to my office and answering all the questions, but I, at, at the moment, I don't feel comfortable in But at the moment, I don't feel comfortable enough to support an additional extension. The report also mentions that we're going to have to come back again for a second year of this consultant agreement. And when initially the plan was pulled out, put forth to us to support, we didn't have this information that we would need to extend it two years. I know that you guys stressed that it's within the existing budget and so forth. I did have some concerns about some staff not being hired for, that could have probably been hired a lot earlier to start really getting trained so that when CH2 leaves, that we have the appropriate staffing that is properly trained to continue on once they leave. And so, for those reasons, I'm not going to be able to support this. I look forward to just having a continued conversation. You know, formerly, I was the appointed councilmember on the Oversight Committee, so I've been very kind of entrenched in this project. And for those reasons, at this point, I can't support the item. So we do have a motion by Councilmember Capriolio and a second by Councilmember Chavez. And so, I guess we'll do an electronic vote. Item 3B, I mean, yeah, 3B. Yeah? Okay, perfect. So the motion carries 3-0 with Councilmember Steve Brandow, Councilmember Oliver Baines, well, Councilmember Oliver Baines abstaining, and then Brandow and Olivier absent. Okay, so this is actions pertaining to the Orange Avenue pavement overlay from California Avenue to Jensen in District 5, Public Works.
That item was removed from?
Oh, it was? I'm so sorry. 3C and 3D. Okay. Next, we go to Item 3E, actions pertaining to the water mains replacement in the southeast vicinity of West Barstow Avenue and North Fresno Street, District 4. Public Works.
Good morning, Council President, members of the council. I'm Scott Seem, Design Services Manager with the Public Works Department. And the item before you is for the award of a construction contract for the replacement of water mains within the vicinity of Southeast Barstow and Fresno Streets. This water main project will reduce service calls, water waste, and provide consistent water pressure by replacing 1.7 miles of water main and service laterals in that neighborhood. It will also, as part of the project, be removing water mains that may currently lie with easements on private property and relocate them to street easements as they are in other communities and other parts of the community. We received five sealed bids, and we had a bid opening on May 15th. And the lowest responsible and responsive bidder was Dawson Malden Construction with a bid of $2,389,162. And it's our recommendation that staff award the contract to Dawson Malden Construction. And DPU and Public Works is here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back. Councilmember Capriolio.
Motion to approve, and thank you for the presentation.
I'll go ahead and second.
Good work. We need that there, so thank you much.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Capriolio and a second by myself. Any opposition? Seeing none, motion carries 6-0 with Councilmember Olivier absent. No, he's here. Next item is Item 3F, actions pertaining to the Maroa Heights installation of the 8-inch and 12-inch water mains and services, Council District 2 and Fresno County, Public Works.
Hello again. This is a similar project to the one we just discussed. This is a water main replacement project at the southeast corner of Barstow and Maroa in the Maroa Heights community. This is Phase 1 of two phases. The second phase will be hopefully ready to award by the end of the year. This project will, like with the other one we just discussed, be replacing 2.6 miles of water mains in that community, and like with the other project, removing them and replacing them in street right-of-way to improve service pressures. And this project received three sealed bids, which were also opened on May 15th, with the lowest responsible and responsive bidder being West Valley Construction. Their bid amount was $3,472,779.75. Staff recommends that council award the contract to West Valley Construction, and we'll be here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. There's no one punched up. Councilmember Brandow, this is in your district. Do you want to make a motion? Motion by Councilmember Brandow, second by Councilmember Capriolio. Any opposition? Seeing none, motion carries 6-0 with Councilmember Olivier absent. Next, we have Item 3G. It is a resolution authorizing the submission of applications for grant funds from the California Department of Transportation's 2018 Active Transportation Program. Public Works.
Yes, thank you. Scott Mosier, Public Works Department. We're pleased to bring this item before the council. There is a new round of funding available through the statewide Active Transportation Program, or ATP. We're pleased to present to you seven proposed project applications around the city. All of these have been the results of constituent request, valuation, staff utilized a scoring, priority ranking matrix that the council adopted in March 2017 with our city of Fresno Active Transportation Plan. And statewide, I want to clarify, there's $438 million available to be awarded, and at the regional level, $4.7 million. These projects would come up in fiscal year '20 through '23. And last item I want to highlight is a component of the statewide funding is from SB 1, and if SB 1 is repealed, it is very possible that the list of awarded projects may be scaled back or stretched out over many years. Staffs available with any questions? We'd recommend approval. Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion, I'll make the second. And I just wanted to make a comment. I know that, I noticed that the area out in Highway City, the Polk area, has a, like by, is it by Gettysburg, the park, the Inspiration Park?
Yes, it is. That proposed project would install a sidewalk along the north side of Gettysburg to connect Inspiration Park to Polk Avenue, and also install a traffic signal at Polk and Gettysburg. It's very close by Teague Elementary, and then coupled with recent grant award of Polk Avenue west-side widening and sidewalks, provides a great continuity and path of travel all the way even to the adjacent fax bus stop.
Great. I just wanted to highlight that, because I know that we've been working over the last few years on ensuring that we connect the park, have a safe path, and so I'm excited to see that there's funds available to be able to complete that. So I want to thank you and your staff for working on that. So there is a motion and a second. Any opposition? Seeing none, motion carries 6-0 with Councilmember Olivier absent. I think that's all that we have this morning. We have a closed session. Are you guys prepared to do closed session before lunch? And is about 25 minutes good for that? What do you guys anticipate? Okay, perfect. So we'll go on to closed session. After closed session, we'll be going on our lunch break, and we'll resume at 1:30. And the only remaining thing we have are the budget motions, and the final vote on the entire budget won't be made until following week.
Yes, in closed session, we have labor negotiations concerning fire management and operating engineers local number three.
Perfect. And I forgot, I wanted to do unscheduled communication. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment at this time? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and go to closed session. My apologies for the delay. We're still waiting on Councilmember Baines, and I'd like him to be here for discussion. We have only a few motions that we'll be taking up today, so that is why I'm kind of holding off to start until we have the full council. So I appreciate everyone's patience. Good afternoon. We're going to go ahead and resume. Where did Cap go now? Oh, he's down there. Okay, so what we're going to do is, we're going to go in sequence through each motion, and we'll have a vote up and down. I just want to remind folks that I mentioned that we can still have additional motions made up to the day that we vote on the final budget, but just for purpose of trying to get through the budget, we will go through the existing motions. We have 16 today, but if any other council member wants to add an additional motion, we will be taking those as we finish the ones that we have in our sequence or in the City Attorney, am I going to have to go to the public on every motion, or how do we generally?
No, we consider this as the motions made while the apartments were being heard, so the public's already been heard on these matters.
Okay.
That the public will get another chance to talk before we adopt the final budget.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. So we're going to start off with motion number one. Oh, no, that one was withdrawn. Council?
Could I ask the City Attorney a question before we get started?
Perfect.
You made me think of something. Doug, how does this work in relationship, how do these motions work in relationship to the mayor's ability to veto?
For the budget, the mayor has line item veto. And so, for each line item in the budget, the mayor may either eliminate or reduce the funding for that line item.
And that's even if that motion or that item had more than, had five or more council votes?
Even if it was 7-0.
Okay, all right. That's what I wanted for clarity.
Now, if the council wanted to add, if the mayor recommended funding something and the council chose not to, of course, there's no line item to eliminate, the mayor can ask for reconsideration of the council.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. So we'll go, start off with our first motion. The first motion was withdrawn, so we'll move on to the second motion. The motion was for the administration to explore adding 12 community service officers and additional 13 dispatchers. Motion made by Councilmember Chavez.
And President Soria, can I just clarify that? I want to add a little bit of language. This, to me, was really kind of like a placeholder, so I want to modify it to read. For the administration to explore adding 12 CSOs and additional 13 dispatchers, prioritizing the dispatchers as funds become available.
So we're modifying the motion, and I was the second of the motion. I'll accept the modifications. Is there any discussion?
So this would take a vote at a future time, then? Okay. So, but it would still take another vote, then, so if we vote for it today, it doesn't automatically, it would still be a discussion and a debate?
A placeholder, correct.
Kind of a placeholder for a conversation?
Parameters.
Okay.
And point of order, Council President and also City Attorney, so let's say that, let's say that number, let's say one of the motions was to fail on a vote. Could I then, before proceeding onto the list, could I make another motion related to that, maybe, let's say that number three here, I don't even know what that is, motion to add a permanent bike unit in the Tower District. Let's say that fails. Could I punch up and make a motion to perhaps improve that motion in an attempt to forge some kind of coalition to get that passed?
Well, the council rules-
And can she take it, could she take that one next, or does it go to the back of the line? That's my question.
The council rules say we take the motions in order they were made. However, the council president would have discretion to take a motion such as what you are offering there.
Well, that makes you my new favorite person, Council President, so we'll just stay tuned. If I feel so moved, then I will speak up.
Thank you, Councilmember Libby, for asking that question. Okay, so we'll go ahead. So the motion number two has been amended. We'll go ahead and repeat it again, but the motion was for the administration to explore adding the 12 community service officers and 13 dispatchers, prioritizing the dispatchers as funding becomes available.
So a yes vote right now does not cost any money? Okay.
And would it be funding available in this fiscal year? Because usually, we know that there's salary savings, or projects may come under budget, so is that what we're talking about?
Fiscal year.
Yeah, so for this fiscal year.
Yeah, just to make sure, because we are anticipating a little over $5 million in attrition as a part of this general fund budget, so it would be in excess of that $5 million. Does I make that clarification? Because we're counting on $5 million of salary savings, general fund-wide, in order to fund this entire budget. So can it be in excess of that $5 million that we would need?
I guess that's a policy call for the folks, or a budget call for the folks up here to decide? Any question? Yeah. So we'll head and proceed with the motion, and we can vote electronically. So we'll move on to the third motion, which is a motion to add a permanent bike unit in the Tower.
So I'd like to jump in on this one. So I did have a long conversation with the chief about this. He's not here today. He will be here Thursday to speak about this if we need him to. We do have DC Crossco in the audience. But I have asked the chief, I've directed the police chief to explore ways to increase police presence in the Tower District based upon his overall policing strategy citywide. So he's going to look at staffing needs, other priorities in the city, and then make the determination. His preference is to make the determination based upon other priorities if he can dedicate staff to the Tower or work with you on certain events or as staffing allows. And so, that is our recommendation for this, before you take a vote.
Right.
Madam President, I would ask if you would amend your motion to include Eldorado Park in Fresno State. We have a bike unit out there sporadically and they make, they have fantastic results. So if we were to include the Tower in that area of Fresno State and Eldorado Park, it's in that same area of need for that type of support, that type of presence for the safety of the students and the residents of Eldorado Park.
I actually would be happy to accept that as an amendment. I know that, and you know, I appreciate the city manager's comments and I've met a number of times with the chief of police on this issue. I know council member Baines and I have been working on this for a number of years in terms of asking and it's been kind of a progression, I will say. We started off with a substation. We, we're very glad that we got that writing station and so we're really looking to increase that, that presence. And so whatever we have to do to, to do that, I'd be happy to include.
Thank you, and I think your second is agreeable.
Council member Baines, agreeable to that?
Thank you, thank you very much.
Council, to be clear then, is that add two bike units, one for Tower and one for Eldorado, or that they share one unit?
How, how large is a unit?
Two bikes, two, well, generally is two.
I think we need probably two units.
So-
Chief Carrasco, do you, do you want to clarify, please?
So it's one unit for each?
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah, whatever, whatever needs to be done to.
You know, let me just say, from, from my perspective, we don't need to go that, that far. Just however the police department needs to organize it to get it done, it's fine with me. We want, we want unit in the Eldorado Park and a unit in the Tower, Tower District. So whatever, whether it's two, whether it's one, it's irrelevant to me, just I guess make it happen.
What's the estimated cost per unit?
We don't, we don't have that.
Go ahead.
If I may, typically when officers are working in a bike unit, we, we typically double them up and have them patrol specific areas. So, so it would be, a bike unit would consist of two officers patrolling in a specific area. So, yeah.
At a cost of how much per unit?
And each one is in a different district. Obviously, there's a distance involved if we had a-
And is that, so you'd have two officers riding on, for one shift? Is that right?
That's correct.
Or is the unit mean two officers, two shifts or?
Right now, the way we, the way we do it is not everyone is bike trained. We have certain officers that are bike trained on certain shifts, not on all shifts.
Okay.
And so as we have officers that are available and staffing allows, we can deploy a double unit in the Tower or in any district that has bike trained officers. And that's something that we're still working on, getting more officers bike trained, because we have to not only provide them with a 40-hour bike training course, but we have to equip them with the, the bicycle and all of the necessary, the helmet, the gloves, the bike shorts, so.
And my understanding, council member from the chief, from the conversation that, that we've had with the chief, is that this would be a reallocation of, of existing personnel. So, so that he would, he would make the judgment call as, as to how to redeploy those individuals to cover the bike unit in the Tower with the appropriate personnel via DC Carrasco's explanation.
Yeah, and that's interesting. So there's no new, we don't have to shift money from somewhere else in the budget. Deputy Chief Carrasco, do you know where you would shift money from, from all the other activities to, to accomplish these two bike units?
Well, what we would do, it would be, it would depend on staffing levels, because when we, when we put resources on bikes in any district, those are officers that, they can respond to any call, however, they're limited because they're on a bicycle, so we typically would not use officers as part of the minimum staffing citywide to respond to all emergency calls for service throughout the city.
Okay, so it's more of a reallocation of resources than coming from your department, just how they would be allocated then?
That's correct. And typically, when the district commanders do deploy bike officers, it's staffing overages that are used to accomplish that, because they're, they're on a bike, so they can't, you know, we can't cross-area dispatch to an emergency call on officer who's in the Tower to respond to a call in Fresno State, at Fresno State.
Sure.
You know, to get there quickly, so.
Yeah, especially if they're on a bike.
Sorry.
Yeah. I still got more questions when you're done.
Okay. So deputy chief, and I, I get the, the comments that you're making about this and, you know, I understood what, what the city manager said in terms of competing priorities. So I think what I want to make sure then to clarify as part of my motion is that when I'm saying add a permanent bike unit, both in the Tower District and in the Eldorado Park, that Fresno State area, we want to add four officers, so that they are simply dedicated. And, and I think that that will be my motion. So then, when you're saying that there's competing needs, that we don't have that, because I know that I've been talking for now three years and that's what I get told, which I totally understand, you know, but I think that we're at that point where we would like to see those dedicated officers.
So this is now a motion to hire four new officers?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So it's not a redeployment of resources, it's to hire for-
Four more new officers.
For the specific purpose of, and so now we should be able to put a price tag on it?
Right, that would probably be upwards of, I would think, half a million dollars.
Ongoing?
Yes.
The other option-
Between, between equipment and, and staffing, training and whatnot, be probably somewhere between $450,000 and $500,000.
So 2.5 million over five years?
Correct.
So, did you have additional questions?
I did. I thought, I think council member Brando had something else to say. I was just gonna suggest that rather than hire, we just dedicate. We just, you take four and you put them in those two locations. As per our policymaking decision, rather than hiring new, but that's a new priority that's important. I, I don't want to remind everyone, but I've had a murder and three shootings, sixth in Shaw, up and down Shaw, it's, it's been horrible. And this presence would certainly impact that type of violence near the university, near Eldorado Park and that particular area. So it's really vital that we, we do something to change that. It's Shaw Avenue, that's, you know, Shaw and Blackstone, busiest intersection, this is just east of that. So there's a great need for this. It's something we have to have.
You know, and I, I want to bring up, uh, uh, chief and I were emailing about this and, and he says, and I know this is a larger conversation and maybe this is something we wait for Thursday, but he feels that the charter does not allow council members to direct the police chief as to how personnel are used. And that he needs to look at that in an overall policing strategy. And that's his interpretation of the charter. And so I know, you know, city attorney, I don't know if you want to chime in? I know the mayor's here too and he would probably, mayor, if you'd like to speak to this item as well?
Let me interrupt. So you're saying as a policymaker, I can't make a policy call? Or maybe we need legal authority?
I'm sharing with you-
City Attorney?
I'm sharing with you something that the-
You wait.
The police chief discussed with me over the weekend. He's not here right now to, because he says he has a lot of background in this item in particular. And so, yes, go ahead, city attorney.
City Attorney, can you chime in?
The, the charter says neither the council nor the mayor shall direct staff or interfere with staff except through official policy. So once you, this would be official policy and yes, the council could direct that there would be the bicycle officers. Now, I think this would always be, always be subject to the emergency needs of the department, that kind of thing. But as a general policy, the council can do this. It would be subject to veto, but that is within the council's authority.
So I think, I think that there is, at least from this council, there's a number of us, that there's a desire. So we can either, I guess, do it one within the staffing that we have, or I would also suggest if, if that's a problem, that we add the four additional officers. And I don't think, are you, were you opposed to adding the four additional officers, council member Baines?
No, it doesn't matter to me either way, honestly. I just, we've been asking for this for a long time. I'm probably at the point of irritation with it now, so I just want to see it get done.
I would like to make comments whenever it's my turn.
Council member Brando.
Okay. So there's a couple of different things and you guys are having a debate, which is that's what today is all about, and I'm fine with that. Caveat, I'm probably gonna step on everybody's toes today, even the, even the people sitting next to me. I might even step on my own toes. But so, but you know, that's just the way we're gonna have to roll today. Not gonna mean I lose any respect or love for anybody up here, but it is one of the most important days that we face throughout our year. So, you know, a couple of things that I'm hearing, and I have no problems with my colleagues' motions and the debate among how they're gonna frame their motion, but the truth is, we already have, we have already not met the number of officers that we planned on hiring one year ago today. So we already had planned on hiring officers. So if you just say, let's hire four more officers, I don't know council president or councilman Capriolio, when you would see some officers that get hired specifically to be bike. So there's gonna, you're essentially telling the chief that you're gonna, you need four more officers, but you're telling them how to direct their personnel. Now, I don't want to step on your toes, I might step on your toes first, but I for sure believe that the police department knows that you've had a tough crime wave in that area. They probably already put some extra, my assumption, they always have, that I've known about, they follow crime, they're, they're on top of it. They probably already dedicated some resources to get you through that crime wave. That doesn't mean I'm against two more cyclists out there more, on a more permanent, in a more permanent deal, but I, you know, I don't want to get the, the concept moving that we know more about what's happening in crime than our police department. Now, if we're gonna hire four more officers, then that means, my question would be, if you guys choose that route, and you guys are having a debate, so it's, I'm just asking questions. If you're gonna hire fi, four more officers, where's that money gonna come from, from this budget? I mean, this is like a budget in a vacuum. If you're gonna move money, you, if you're gonna say, I need another half a million a year, we need to find a way of where that's gonna come from. It's my, just my thought on the way budgets work. If you're gonna ask the other pathway of just directing the, the police department to reallocate their personnel, then that's a different thing. Then that, that's easier as far as a budget, it's tougher on the police department. So either way, I just want to know which way you guys are going with this, because either one of them has, you know, circumstances that, you know, we all have to consider. So you guys could probably clear up your, right now, council president, you want four new officers, and councilman, you're, you're, you want just a real allocation of services. So those are two different things. So.
The reason that I brought up the whole new four officers is because of the statements that are being made, saying that say we even address the policy, what has happened, and I, you know, I've asked for this for three years, this is my, I think, fourth, fourth year asking. But what will happen is that it doesn't become a priority, and so therefore, it doesn't happen again. So that's, that's where I guess I'm at in terms of why I'd say, okay, so that we don't have competing priorities or an excuse that we do have those additional officers. That's, that's the reason.
So how, how do you think council president about my thought that we're already 19 officers behind what we had budgeted for last year? So your officers would be numbers 20 through 23. And then hypothetically, those officers are, might be sworn in a year and a half from now. So, or, or are you saying, I want the very next four officers that were already budgeted for to be applied to this situation? You know, you see what I'm saying? We're already 19 officers that we voted for last year that we don't have on the books today, so we add four more. I just don't get the point of that. That make sense?
Councilman Brando, I, you know, I, I just think that it's very clear that we would like to see bike officers in these places. However it's accomplished, we want it accomplished. It's not necessarily, from my perspect, from my position, it's not necessarily up to me to say how they accomplish it, but I want to see it accomplished, because it's about to be a policy call.
Except if you hire four new, then it's a part of this.
I'm fine with hiring, I'm fine with hiring four, I, I have no problem with that, but if that is not agreeable to the police department, then redeploy resources. If it's better for them to hire four, give me a recommendation, I'll do it, but I'm not gonna debate whether or not we're gonna do, add a bike unit. That's not, I don't want to debate that. That, I believe, is clear in the motion, and I think we're open to figuring out how it gets done, but we don't want to debate whether or not they're gonna add, add bike units.
Okay, that's, that's a good conversation. That's what, essentially what I'm asking.
Right, yeah, you're asking us to tell them how to do it, and I'm like, that's not, we just want to see it done.
Well, it just that, it, it, the only thing, Oliver, is that it changes is if we're gonna hire people, then it becomes a part of this thing.
I get it.
If we're just gonna reallocate source-
And I feel pretty, I feel pretty confident that we probably could figure out a way to hire four more officers if we needed to. I, I, I feel, I feel like we could.
Council member, we have vacancies currently, as, as council member Baines pointed out. Is, is, is a possible solution then to say that the next four that are hired from the current set of vacancies should be subject to the chief's discretion is, is to be forming two bike units?
What does discretion mean?
Well, it depends on where the chief of police, who is in charge of the public safety of the city, deems that in an emergency, perhaps, those officers are better utilized in another part of the city that has a more urgent crisis.
In a non-emergency situation, we're saying as a policy, this is what we want. So, that's our job.
So the policy is one thing, but the discretion and the authority to direct staff is, resides in the police chief. It does not reside in this council. It resides in the police chief to best direct staffing where he deems it necessary based upon the needs and the particular hour, the particular minute of the day. And, and your policy authority goes to the point of saying, we want two bike units. We want one in Eldorado Park and we want one in the Tower District. And however the chief needs to move positions around in order to achieve that, then that's what he needs to do. And mayor, I believe-
Thank you, thank you very much.
I believe, did you want to say something?
Yeah, so mayor, if you want to chime in, I know that, I just got a little message that you wanted to say a few words.
And, look, we make policy all the time. And if the idea is that our policy's never gonna be followed, then I don't know what we're doing here. Why are we even adopting a budget? I mean, if, when, when we make a motion and we say this is what we want to happen, then that's what's supposed to happen. So unless I'm misunderstanding something, when the council makes a policy call, then the department director, regardless of whether it's the police chief, fire chief, or anyone, can't necessarily just choose to disregard that policy call.
I think I'm confused, and that's just-
I'm not confused at all.
Well, we have legal authorities.
But some of us are.
City Attorney, and I'm sorry, I had the floor, council member still. So, city attorney, if we make a policy call up here to, and what we're talking about, am I, am I to understand that it doesn't have to be followed?
The council sets policy, that's it.
All right, thank you.
The council is the policymaking body of the city.
So I just received a note from the police chief and he would like me to tell council that he will redeploy two officers, officers immediately to the Tower and two officers to Eldorado Park effective July 1st.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, did you want to chime in?
I can't top that. Let me just say, I'm not here to debate the policy part. I was in the council for eight years. I understand where everybody comes from. Just remember though, that if, you know, if you put two here or put two there, somebody else is gonna have two less if you're doing internally. Even adding, you know, new positions based on, you know, events we have on a daily basis with gangs and murders and stuff that's pretty bad, that, you know, it's, it's a not an easy decision. But let me say this, when, everything I've heard so far in the budget debate, I've heard nothing that is crazy or isn't unwarded. All these things, whether it be parks, fire positions, more street maintenance, these are all things the city needs. It's simply a question of how much can the city afford and what do we prioritize? That's, that's what I try to do. And there's two different types of things. There's not, one time I want to spend $3 million on a fire station, if I want to add 10 firefighters, if I want to add 10 CSOs, those are ongoing deals. So whatever that cost is per year, we're doing a five-year budget, I have to multiply that times five. So if we're gonna add, you know, was it 10 CSOs or look at hiring 10, right? Is that the, the motion on CSOs and dispatchers? We're just gonna take this one right here. If we add four police officers, two for Paul's district and two for the Tower District, that's roughly $500,000. So that's, now I'm looking at $2 million, because I've got a, you know, multiple, actually 2.5, multiply that times five years. When I did the budget for five years, the ending fifth year was like $500,000 in the positive. Now to show you how tight that budget was, and I've told this to Steve, every year I've been trying to put, build up a reserve. told this to Steve, every year I've been trying to put, build up a reserve. Is there any question about that? It's been pretty a top priority. So I usually put in about three point five million dollars that the RDA repayment was there. If you look at your budget on a five-year plan, you'll see after the first two years, two million dollars, two point five, on the, uh, reserve deposit. In order to balance the budget, I had to take money out of my sacred cow, which was the reserve, to illustrate the condition of the budget. Everything I've heard up here, there's nothing that wouldn't be needed, but we have to ultimately balance the budget. And if we had, you know, four positions here, there's five hundred thousand, I've gotta find five hundred thousand someplace else for the next five years to balance out. If we ultimately determine that we want dispatchers and CSOs, and again, I like that too, that's a cost of a million dollars or one point five, we have to find that one point five, not just one time, but every, for the next five years. So, that's my, my caveat on your debate. I'm, again, I, I know all you guys well, I know you're, you're very conscientious about your districts, but keep in mind, we have to have a, a program, and I can't give everybody what they want. So we have to find out what's highest, and then the other part of the, the equation is build our revenues up, find other ways to raise revenues, and we all know what those are. So, I'm here to listen and try to find a solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So, before, um, I proceed with the other folks that are gonna chime in, I just want to make sure, so the motion, um, that I'm gonna move forward, and I appreciate the comments by the chief, I'm happy to hear that he's willing to do it starting July first, so just so that is on the record, we'll make a motion, um, that will have those two, um, dedicated bike units, one in the Tower, um, and one in Council District Four, in the Eldorado Park. So that'll be, um, and, you know, we heard from the comment made by the City Manager that the chief is willing to do it starting July first. Um, Councilmember Bretafeld?
Yeah, I mean, I'm gonna support this, and I support, uh, this being a policy issue. Um, obviously Councilmember Baines, Sariah, Capriola have been talking about the need that they feel for these, uh, police officers in their district, and I support, uh, their feeling about that. Obviously, nobody here is telling Chief Dyer how to run his department. I don't think anybody up here would ever do that. Nobody can do it better than I think he does. Um, but, we have the right to set a policy, and I think there, what we're seeing here is an ongoing tension between an administration and a council, and we have that built into the system, but I think it's often overlooked that this council decides how money gets spent. Uh, we don't determine what police officers should be where, that's up to Chief Dyer. And, the mayor's right, the mayor has, uh, tremendous responsibility in terms of overseeing that budget and how money gets spent, and if we want something, where that money comes from, but that's also our responsibility. I don't expect the, the mayor to just say, "Hey, hey Mayor, here, we want these, go do it." It's up to us to come up with, well, how are we gonna pay for that? I think that's always been part of the, the program. That's the duality of our relationship between the administration and us. But I think there, and I hear sometimes coming, uh, from this side here, that we don't have that right to set the policy. We don't have the right to dictate how the money gets spent. We have the right to dictate every penny that comes into this city, every penny. We can shut down departments, open up new departments, close departments, take out positions. There's nothing the City Council can't do. There's nothing by charter the City Council isn't obligated to do. I think we need to remember that. We are collaborative here. The administration doesn't tell us how to do things. We don't tell the administration what to do. We work together. And if there are three or four council members who feel that they need a bike team patrolling because of the unique needs of their neighborhood, I hear that. I listen to that, and it sounds like there's been a lot of frustration and they've been talking for years. And I think this, this council needs to come together when there is a policy issue and say, "Hey, this is the policy." And if we have to find a way to pay for it, and we have to cut something, then we need, we have that obligation to do that. I don't expect Mayor Brand to have that responsibility. Uh, he handles his responsibilities just fine. We need to do it as well. And so I support my colleagues on this. I think the, the policy makes sense. That's what they feel they need, and I'm gonna support it today.
Great, so we, thank you. So we have a motion seconded by Councilmember Oliver Baines. Um, seeing that no one has punched up, um, we'll go ahead and vote on the motion. Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have motion number four. Um, this is, this motion was made by Councilmember Bretafeld. It's a motion to include a safety officer position comprised of three captains and one vehicle for approximately five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars per year, and to also split the water team with the addition of three firefighters, one per shift, for approximately four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year.
Yes, self-explanatory. It was, uh, my response to a need that I think Chief Donnis, uh, very well expressed the need for, and, uh, so I do make the motion.
Perfect. So, well, there is, the motion has already been seconded. I had, um, seconded the motion last time. Is there any other discussion? Councilmember Capriolo?
Thank you. Uh, I have no problem, uh, with the motion or the, uh, the motivation behind the motion, but, but I think there's enough money based upon some of our discussions between the, uh, funds that are allocated for positions and those positions that are filled. And between those two items, there's, uh, I understand about two point five million dollars, and that money could be utilized to implement the motion that you made, and we can, uh, keep it within our boundaries of budget, if you will. Uh, and that does not impact the overtime fund, as I understand it at all. So, I would, uh, ask that that be part of the motion, that we use that, the attrition funds, I guess they call it, uh, to implement this policy.
Perfect. I support, if the motion maker wants to amend that, I would support that motion.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Councilmember Olivier?
Yeah, I just need to, I think that I was absent on the day this motion was made. Is the administration in support of this item?
We would have to figure out where the funds come from, and I understand what you said about the attrition, but I want to keep in mind and remind council that that attrition savings, those salary savings that we're taking every month, is helping to balance the overall budget. So something else would have to go away then, if this were implemented.
So this is five thirty-five plus four fifty a year ongoing, so that's a million dollars a year ongoing, that's not currently budgeted for?
Correct.
Okay, um, to the maker of the motion, um, can you bring me up to, to speed on this?
Well, I think Councilman Capriola just did. Uh, we have attrition savings, we can look at it, uh, from that point of view in terms of how we use those funds.
And it's within that department. We're not taking from any other department to, to accommodate that.
But those salary savings, overall, for every general fund department are used for the entire balancing of the budget. And so this year, we, and Henry, correct me if I'm wrong, this current fiscal year, we needed five point two million dollars worth of salary savings in order to balance the budget. Those, had those been used for anything else, this budget would not have been balanced.
Correct.
So, moving forward, those attrition savings are also needed, and, and I, I actually have an earmark on what page in the budget we talk about that. It is on page A eighty-eight. So if you are making a motion against those salary savings, then the bal, the budget as it stands would not, the, the budget as it stands would not balance, and something else would have to give in order to make up this one million plus ongoing. And Henry, Jane, correct me if, okay.
I, I would ask to the maker of the motion, are, are you, are you identifying, are you able to identify where that money will come from?
So, can I chime in?
No.
So, in our conversations, I think the chief made, you know, um, presentation twice, where she answered questions in terms of positions, and so maybe I can call you up, Chief, in terms of the number of positions. Do you, do you think that within those, the number of positions that we would approve with this budget, we could figure out a way to fund, even if it's part of what we're trying to, to do here with, uh, those, uh, safety officers and so forth?
Um, I think if you use those positions to fund that, I think, uh, the City Manager is correct, that you're gonna have to find, um, another, um, place to cut money to fulfill the, the balancing of the totality of the budget.
Okay. Councilmember Bretafeld?
I have a question. Uh, this attrition savings, is that some savings that you're assuming will be saved, or it's actual attrition savings?
For the FY nineteen, that's what we're projecting. So, in essence, we're, we're making that estimate.
Okay, so the estimate could be that there will be more savings than you're thinking there could be less?
More, yes.
Right, and every single month of this current fiscal year, when we have the month close, Henry gives me an update, because we were very close this year to make, to even hit the five point two. And so every month, we're monitoring that. That's something that, that we monitor, and, and we just don't know. I mean, if, if PD hires all of the vacancies, then the attrition savings may not be there, because the large, the largest part of the salary savings is coming from the Police Department.
Okay, but the, and the, do they have, the salary savings have to stay in that department, right?
No.
Well, technically it does, but what we do is we, we reclassify their savings down into contingency, so that it's locked up and it cannot be spent.
Okay. So if we move forward with this motion today, um, where does that, I mean, are you suggesting that we have to identify right now at this moment where that cost savings would be with every motion? We have to do the same thing with a bike, uh, you know, two officers with, uh, bikes for every motion that we do right now?
Councilmember Bretafeld, I think, at the end of the day, it's a policy call, so we make the, the, but, we make decisions based on the budget that we have in front of us. Next year, we're gonna have to figure out how we balance our books with the existing things that we added or didn't add this year of the budget. So I think those are decisions that we have to make.
Okay. Well, my motion is what it is. I think we need the, uh, safety officers, and so I think we should proceed.
Councilmember Brando?
So, on this item, I have to go back to, um, a question that my colleague brought up last week, when the chief was, uh, of all the departments, the Fire Department came up twice during our budget talks, because there were a lot of questions about personnel in our Fire Department. Um, and we discovered, and Councilman Baines, you probably can put this in better words than I can, but we discovered that we're purposefully saying, "These are the number of fire positions we're gonna budget for, but this is the number we really need." I don't like that approach to budgeting. I don't like that approach to how we represent ourselves to the community. I'd rather be very accurate. I don't think we do that with police. This is what we need, this is how many we're gonna add, this is why, and we're not purposely not trying to reach to eight hundred and nineteen. We're, we're aggressively trying to get to hundred and nineteen. Both these council members talked about this last week. In the Fire Department, we put a number out there that we're not actually aggressively trying to get to. It's led to a debate on the DIES and council, um, and the union representation is, is discussed with council, at least I know they have with me, uh, behind the scenes. So there are so many moving balls in this department, that it's, it can be very difficult for me to vote on this, positively on this today. But Councilman Bretafeld, here's what I think about this. I think it's needed, should, should be done, has to be done. I'm gonna suggest that we make this like a tier-one item, and then when we have any money discovered in council midterm, it could be applied to this. And then that would give us time to conquer these other questions that we've seen in the Fire Department, as far as the personnel, because Councilman Capriolo brought up a great point, actually. You want to add personnel to the Fire Department, but the truth is, we already have a number that we're not honestly striving to get to. So that's a real weird situation for me, and I'd rather fix that number, and fix that number, and then take a look at implementing your budget, your, your motion, but I don't think I can vote to support it today.
Okay, I, I like what you're saying. Let me ask the chief something.
And, can I also, I think the mayor wanted to make a comment. Do you still want to make a comment? Do you want to wait? Okay, Chief, sorry.
So Chief, as, and I'm trying to assist you here with what you feel that you need, is there anything in your department, any way that you can look at your budget that can somehow determine where you can fund these, either with unfunded positions, or attrition, or anything at all? If not, then, you know, obviously I will, I'd be willing to say this is, you know, a top-level thing, and we'll look mid-year at this.
If the con, the conversation is, we, you know, how do we put these positions in place? We would fill the vacant posi, some of the vacant positions we have, it'd be three safety officers and three firefighters, with the vacancies we have. Um, but that does require some funding. There, there isn't some extra funding in the Fire Department that we could move around to make that happen. We do have the positions available, you can, we can make that happen with our current staffing. Um, but again, there's still, you know, a funding stream that has to support that increase to our minimum daily staffing.
And so, I, I guess your answer at this point, there's no way you could see that funding with your existing resources now?
Well, we have.
Adding these people?
Not the extra, well, we could, yes, we could fill the positions. It probably wouldn't be until October, November, by the time we got our recruit class and folks ready to go, but, um, there is FTEs available, they're unfilled, but there still is, and, and this underlying funding cost associated annually with these increased minimum daily staffing positions, whether it be the safety officer or the additional firefighter.
Councilmember Baines?
Yeah, thank, thanks, Council President. And I'm, I'm really, uh, leaning towards kind of where Councilmember Brando was coming from, and I think there's another element to the discussion with Fire, uh, Councilmember Bretafeld. And we've talked about it loosely, uh, the chief has talked about it a little bit, and I talked about it with, uh, some, y- union reps yesterday, about the idea of going to a squad, the squad, um, uh, type of response, which potentially has also the ability to save money, as I understand it, if it's implemented properly. Um, obviously it has to be negotiated, but just the idea of moving away from, uh, the big, the big engines buying big engines, you know, going to squads, has a potential, I think there's broad agreement around that. So, I'm actually very supportive of your motion to add the safety officers. I've talked to the chief on a number of occasions, and it's very clear that this is a high priority for them, but I will say that, that I think that there's some more discussion to be had around the topic with the department as a whole, and, and we should probably be figuring out how that fits into the grander scheme. So I want to support your motion. I like the idea of, um, maybe revisiting it mid-year. Probably gives us an opportunity to work on a couple of things and actually get to, get to the bottom of it.
I, I think that makes a lot of sense, because there are a lot of issues, a lot of discussions that we had today, and we're gonna have about the Fire Department, and clearly about, you know, going out to these, uh, medical calls and things of that sort. So I have no problem with, let's hold that off mid-year, and we'll look at it again.
So the motion would be to bring it back at mid-year?
Yeah, mid-year, and we'll have a, a discussion. Hopefully we'll have maybe even more information at that point regarding some of the issues that both, uh, Steve and Oliver addressed.
And I'm happy to even take a vote on today prioritizing that from our perspective, that we can solidify that as a tier-one issue.
Okay, that's my motion.
If we wanted to vote that way.
So then the motion is revised to, um, come back at mid-year and prioritize this, depending on what, yeah, as a tier-one issue?
Yes, a tier-one, yes.
Okay, so voting for this motion today costs the city zero dollars, correct?
Yeah, well, it, it'll be brought back mid-year.
Zero. All right, I'll support it.
But it will cost us some money at some point, councilmembers, so I don't want to, I don't want to mislead you.
Well, then I'm gonna vote against it, because here's the thing. I mean, we can ask department heads all day long what their wish lists are, and every department head is a critical part of this organization, in this case, public safety and saving lives. But it's become a tradition of this body to get department heads and, and up there and put them on the spot and say, "What's your wish list?" Well, absolutely, they want all kinds of people, and, and tanks, and drones, and all kinds of fantastic things that cost a lot of money. So is it, does it mean that if a department head comes forward, whether they're from parks or from public safety, or from fax, or wherever they're from, they say, "Yes, I have a wish list," and then this council assumes that, "Well, shoot, if we don't do that, well then we're endangering lives, or we're doing a bad job, or we're not taking care of our department heads." The reality is, is that they all have wish lists, and there's all kinds of things that they wish they could do, but, um, the taxpayers who live in the city can't afford all the wish list items that we individually all have, and all the department- that we individually all have and all the department heads have. We just can't, so it's about priorities. And in this case, there's no money for it. So I'll support the motion today, but just saying, you know, going forward, we have to be very careful.
Thank you, Councilmember Olivia. Councilmember Brettafield?
Yeah, I completely agree. Priorities is what it's all about. And public safety, I'm not going to be shy about it, is number one. And whether it's firefighters or police, it's number one. If Police Chief Jerry Dyer feels the need for tanks and drones, I want to give him his tanks and drones, because I think we ought to make him safe. If the fire chief needs safety officers, I think we ought to provide the safety officers. You wanted a senior citizen center, that's priorities. I was willing to support that, because we need a senior citizen center in our community. And you were willing to spend money for that, because you saw that as a priority. So, yes, it's all about priorities, and we need safety officers. We need to look at the fire department, see how we can do things maybe differently, so we can get the things we need. But, you know, it's always about public safety. It ought to be about public safety. We always all campaign about public safety, and that's our number-one priority.
Thank you, Councilmember Brettafield. Mayor, did you still have a comment to make?
Just a point of clarification. Like Clint said, when the department directors come to us in March, they have a wish list. So the final budget that Chief Donnis brought, I guarantee, was only a small part of her wish list. There's a lot of stuff that was let out. An answer to, you know, Steve, your question about, well, if we find money, remember, though, if this is, say, adding three positions that say it's costing a million dollars a year, it's not just a one-time, we have to identify a million dollars a year down the road. Remember, the safer grants, the cops grants, those were done years ago. Those are great. They're easy to do, two or three years, and then you have to pick up the tab. Nobody here is going to want to lay off anybody in public safety. So we have to identify an ongoing funding stream. As it's put together right now, unless there's some miracles, it's not going to be there. They talked about the salary, I mean, the attrition savings last year came in really close, because we were actually in a position last year when we were trying to hire police officers, but we wanted 800, but we knew we really couldn't afford to have that fast. Well, they were coming that fast. And at the end of the day, whatever totals up, if it's 2 million, if it's 20 million, you guys have to balance the budget. You're going to have to tell me, I'll give you, what else can we do to balance this budget? You've got a couple of choices. You can say, I can make, I think, sales tax 87 million is not, let's make it 97, make, you know, a fantasy move like that, or you say, who's going to get cut? Because we can't put on these many changes. And I'm not debating policy calls. It's simply dollars and cents. We have to have a balanced budget. Am I right, City Attorney, by our city charter?
Adopting a balanced budget?
Yeah.
The charter does not require adopting a balanced budget. What the charter says is that the council would come back in August to raise taxes to balance the budget, which we can't do anymore because of Prop 218.
Effectively, every, I've been here 10 years, we balance the budget every year. So whatever the council comes up on, whatever, and they're keeping tally, I know Henry is, we're going to have to find something to replace that, not just one time. If it's a one-time deal, we'll do it one time. But if you add staffing and things that are ongoing cost, you've got to multiply that down, find the funding stream down the year. And I can tell you from my experience, eight years on the council, two years here, those salary attrition levels are generally pretty, pretty close. The other thing, one final thing I want to say, when we did this budget, it was a very tight budget. There's no presumption for recession. So if there's a mild recession and the general fund contracts just 1%, you're off $3.4 million. If it contracts 3%, you're off $10 million. Earlier this morning, I went back the last 10 years and looked at the general fund and sales tax in particular. In one year, it was like 2009 to 2010, it dropped almost $10 million. So that can happen. So whatever we do, let's make sure, in the end, we have a balanced budget, trying to do the best we can to meet the needs of the community. Thank you.
Mayor, thank you, Mayor. We do still have a motion on the table, and I've agreed to second that, so we'll go ahead and take an electronic vote. The motion carries six, one. Thank you. We'll move on to the next motion, motion number five. This motion is to add the Sierra Madre neighborhood, the Tegu Elementary School neighborhood and Highway City South Shaw to the list of neighborhoods to be revitalized on page B45 of the proposed budget. Motion made by Councilmember Capriolio, and I will second.
And can I jump in on this one again, too? So, Councilmember Capriolio, we appreciate you meeting with Phil Sky last week, I believe. And what we've agreed to is bringing back a workshop for the neighborhood revitalization team in September and walking through, showing council how we choose those neighborhoods. So we have added the two neighborhoods that you mentioned here in the motion to the list for consideration, and we will, actually, I think it's three neighborhoods listed in the motion. And we'll outline the process, and we're happy to walk through you all in terms of what that process is, and then we'll look at those neighborhoods in terms of whether or not they have variables and meet the criteria for selection, which includes high crime, you know, poor school performance, blighted buildings, et cetera. So we're happy to add those to the list.
Perfect.
So you have no opposition to the motion, is what I'm hearing. Very good. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. So, do we want to do an electronic? Well, we'll do an electronic vote, since we've been doing electronics on all of them. Stay consistent. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next, we have a motion for staff to go back and review the budget to find up to $213,000 for an increase for the SPCA contract to cover minimum wage increases.
That was my motion, Council President. And it seemed to me at the time that to keep the SPCA involved with our community, knowing that we have no backup, to reach the minimum wage level, this was the basis of my motion, to bring them up to a minimum, the community wage, if you will, and to maintain the program at the level it is. I know there are some negative comments by my colleagues, but really, I don't know of a backup position. There's, I don't know of a backup position. If you do, let me know, but that was the basis for the motion.
So that motion was made by Councilmember Capriolio and seconded by Councilmember Brando. Councilmember Olivia?
Thank you, Council President, and I appreciate your remarks right there, Member Capriolio, no backup. And I know that it's been something that's been near and dear to my heart and important to me over the course of the past seven years. You know, I think that I wrongly assumed that the folks in the animal rescue community, I think that seven years ago, I believed that the community could step up and provide an alternative to the SPCA. But unfortunately, the community, the animal welfare community here in Fresno is very fragmented. The coalition that I had hoped would come together never really managed to do so. Many of the groups out there have their hearts in the right place, but they're involved, or they are, I guess, the resistance to the SPCA, because they favor a no-kill shelter. And then there are other groups that just want the SPCA to be accountable. But, you know, there is no backup. I originally made the motion, and then I withdrew the motion because of the comments from the director of the SPCA. Let me just leave you with this, council, and it's probably going to be the last thing that I ever say about the SPCA, because I'm leaving in six months. But this organization sends out, and it's funny, you all chuckle, I see people chuckling, but let's take a look at what you do, council. We send out badged people, wearing badges, in badged vehicles with sirens on the top, flashing lights, whatever you want to call it. And they have the right to impound private property, destroy private property. They have the right to issue citations. They take over $3 million of taxpayers' money from the people in your district, and we have no, they have no accountability at all. And it's almost as if the SPCA is the one group that I've really ever dealt with that has a gun to the head of the taxpayer, the city of Fresno. How they can continue to come to council and accuse this body of not fostering a good partnership with the SPCA, when we have asked them repeatedly if we can participate by having a seat on their board, if we can play a bigger role when it comes to animal control. And they tell us, well, we want your money, but we don't want to have any input from any of the, any of the folks here at the city. So I think with that, you know, I would like to see a better presentation from the SPCA, so I'm going to vote this one down. I think if they get mad enough, then they'll pick up their toys and go home, because they don't want to talk to the city, they don't want city council members anywhere near them, they don't want our housing manager anywhere near them, our community revitalization people. This group has gone rogue. The SPCA is a rogue organization in the city of Fresno, and there's nothing we can do about it. So with that, I'm going to vote no on this item, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Olivia. Councilmember Baines?
Thank you, Council President, and there are, listen, I just want to agree with Councilmember Olivier. I remember when the, all I said is, I wanted to start by agreeing with you. I remember when the SPCA was here, and they gave their presentation, and the director, if I remember correctly, couldn't tell me precisely what their overall budget was, nor did she even think that they had any responsibility to do any fundraising on behalf of their own organization, which I think is preposterous. So, and I do agree, they hold a gun to our head, and, you know, they don't allow us anything. So we've been down this road before, so we always lose, but I think that does not remove the ridiculousness of the situation. I think that they bear some responsibility for doing some fundraising and keeping that organization afloat. And quite frankly, I don't think that they feel the same way. So I would only support this motion, Councilmember Capriolio, and you know the deep respect I have for you. But I would only support this motion if they were responsible for coming up with the other half of that. They owe it to do some fundraising on behalf of their employees, too. And I remember she sat here and told me that she didn't feel like they were obligated to do any, which, I don't know, all of our departments fundraised in the city of Fresno, one way or the other. So the fact that we fund them and they don't even feel like they have to participate, to me, is really ridiculous. So absent that provision, I won't support the motion.
What was that provision, my colleague?
That we only fund half of the $213,000, so that would be 106,500, I think.
And that would be subject to review in six months, or we make budget adjustments? Is the screen clear?
Yes, Councilmember Capriolio, did you? Oh, Councilmember Olivia, you're next, and then Councilmember Brando.
Go ahead, Steve. I'll wait.
Well, I have no problem with that concept about revisiting this in the second half of the year. Are we, this is very tough, because we have to admit that we're on the, we're underpowered inside of this conversation, right? Both my colleagues that have already spoken have acknowledged that. It's very frustrating. I do agree with Councilman Olivier on the, I think it would be a great olive branch to put somebody from this council on their board for those meetings. That's not that big a deal, but there's resistance there. City manager, if we only did half, we don't have any concept if there are even, why I can't do that today unless I get a different answer from the city manager is, what I can't do today is have one of our partners walk away and have the animal control problems that I already have in some neighborhoods exponentially go off the charts. And I can't be a part of...
I can't speak for SPCA. You heard Lynda Van Kirk when she was here last week. What we've been told by them is that if we don't come up with the minimum wage, the $213,000 at a minimum, they will be reducing services, that they will not be able to provide status quo services. And so with that, we've also offered, I know that she has had some hesitation to have a council member on her board. I've also offered up staff to her, whether it be somebody from our code enforcement division, our office, whoever, to be on that board. She's also not accepted that, as you heard her last week. And so, we, the administration, mayor's committing to do an overall look at our animal control, at what options we have, look at overall strategy. We're already working on that. Laura Gloria in my office is already working on what we can do as a city, spay and neuter ordinance, et cetera. And so we are working on that, because we want to look at how we reduce the cost overall. But I can't speak for SPCA, I just can, what our understanding is, they will reduce service if we don't fund the 213 this fiscal year.
Steve, I can answer your question, okay? The SPCA does two things. The three-point, what is it they get from us, 3.5, 3.8 million, so almost $4 million? Okay, they do two functions. The spay and neuter, and the education, and the awareness, and the operation of the shelter, they run with what they raise. The animal control function is what we've contracted with them to provide. They've said over and over they don't want to do it. I think she stood here and says, well, we don't like doing that. We want to be a small shelter, we want to do adoptions, we want to do, you know, those kinds of things. We begrudgingly take the $4 million and provide the animal control function. Whoever does it is going to be underwater on day one. There's what, 30,000 animals a year that they have to pick up? I mean, divide that by 365, there's thousands upon thousands upon thousands of animals that they take. So if the city were to step in, we were to hand it to Chief Dyer, we were to hand it to fire, or however the city wanted to administer that, I think right off the top, $5, $7, $10 million a year ongoing to do animal control and create one out of whole cloth. There's no shelter built, there's no facility that we could house these in, we have no employees, we have nothing. So unless this organization had $10 million that first year, and millions of dollars a year ongoing, to address this, we have no choice but to stay with the SPCA and dance on the end of their string when they tug the string. There's nothing that anyone in this room can do to change that, unless we can come up with millions upon millions of dollars a year ongoing. And so they say, so to answer your question, there are those two functions. There's the animal control function that they provide for this municipality, and then there's the other, the sheltering and the adoption fairs and all the other things that they fundraise for. There's a woman in the gallery right now who called me earlier today. They're doing, and I don't know where that money comes from, but they're doing a $7,000, it's in their budget, $7,000 employee party. So, you know, and then they come and say that they don't have money to pay the employees. Well, they got $7,000 budgeted for employee party over at the SPCA. So there are some problems, but there's, again, they're rogue, there's no way to pay for it. I mean, there's no way to look into it, there's no way to voice concern, there's no way to advocate for taxpayer accountability with this organization, completely rogue. So I'm going to oppose this motion today. But, I mean, like, if we make them too mad, they leave, and then we get lampooned in the cartoon in the newspaper for setting all these animals loose in the street, when the reality is our backs are against the wall. I've never seen anything like it.
So knowing everything that you just said, which I think is a great little commentary, it seems like you would support it today, because you know that our backs are against the wall, do you want, are you asking them to?
When SPCA pulls their string, I don't dance. So I'm willing to, I mean, if you guys join me and we say no, well, then we're at a standoff with them, and we're going to have a repeat of seven years ago, when I was new here. So it's a very, it's a very difficult situation.
Ask the mayor or the administration, has there been any reconnection with the county of Fresno on this issue to solve this? Or are we working completely outside of, not with our county partners on this?
Well, I share your frustration, Councilman Olivier, and I believe they are serious when they say they would cancel the contract, and we found that out almost. And there's no alternative. I've been talking to the county since last year, talking to Darrell Ridenhour on where they're going on the land he's dedicated. The options right now are pretty expensive, but I've talked to city manager, my staff is already looking for alternatives and funding and so on. But I would say my advice would be to keep the contract now and maintain the service, because we have an out-of-control situation with thousands of animals out there if they did do that. So I don't like it any more than anybody here does, but I've got to be pragmatic, and then I could even get a couple of councilmembers who want to work with me down the road to look for alternatives for next year.
Yeah, you know, I'll tell you... Yeah, you know, I'll tell ya, and Councilman Caprillo, a few minutes ago, when we were talking on a different issue, you brought up the anecdotal evidence that you see happening in your community when it, in regards to the, yeah, right? So, you know, last year, we had one of our pastors in Pinedale try to break a dog off of a kid, the dog turned on him and, uh, really viciously tore into him. He said, it's one of the, the people that serve, uh, Pinedale and, and meet us on a monthly basis. So, we got some real first, I mean, it happens all across the community, and so, here's what I can't not do today. So, I cannot say to our citizens that we are going to withdraw from this contract without having something else in its place and allow those problems to grow exponentially worse. So, I'm gonna be supportive of this today, although I understand my colleagues' major concerns.
Councilmember Caprillo.
Well, I agree with, uh, your comments, uh, Councilmember Brandow, and, uh, no one likes to have a gun held to their hand or, or head or whatever, uh, but, you know, when you, when we somehow painted ourselves into a corner, uh, this is what happens. So, in the future, we have to think long-term, we have to think unintended consequences, we have to think in terms of backup plans and backup solutions in case the thing falls apart, whatever the issue is. And I think this council is, is on that, uh, on that track, and I think with, uh, Mayor Brand's leadership, we will continue to think in those terms. Unfortunately, we're, uh, at a point where we have to, uh, fish or cut bait, as they say. So, that's the basis for the motion, and I support it. Uh, as Member Brandow said, in my neighborhood as well, a neighbor across the street had the very same thing with his dog, had, uh, I think about 18 stitches in his dog that's so passive, it was incredible. So, uh, uh, so I urge you all, uh, to take a second look at this, and it's not ideal, but it's reasonable for the moment. Thank you.
Councilmember Caprillo, just to clarify, um, your original motion stands? I know that Councilmember Baines offered, um, to amend the motion. Do, does your original motion stand?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
I think it's such a vital service, and the stories that we hear and see in the paper every day, we've gotta, we've gotta try to mitigate the best way possible, and, and I think the motion will help with that situation.
Thank you.
I just had one question. Do we know the terms of the con, the lawyer, me coming up? The terms of the contract, the duration, and is there any clauses in it for, uh, divestification or things like that?
City attorney? I believe it's a 30-day termination.
Yes, the contract provides that either party may terminate on 30 days' notice, among other things.
I rest my case.
Councilmember Bretafell.
Yeah, so the question I have, uh, we ran into this a couple, how many years ago, Colton?
Five or six.
Five or six years ago. So, why are we, why didn't we rectify this, you know, from five or six years ago, so we're not being held hostage today?
I can, I can answer that. What happened was, um, I made the same remarks that you just heard me make, um, and I, no, I wrote an editorial in the Bee, uh, containing the remarks that I just made, and they became so angry that they exercised their 30-day, uh, 30-day right to, to, to end the contract with the city. A task force was begun, um, with myself, uh, city manager Rudd, I think the county supervisor, Henry Perea, was part of that, because they, they yanked the rug out from not, under not just the city, but the county as well. Well, what happened was, the sands were dropping through the hourglass, and there was no answer. There was no one in the community that would step forward, that can, that could handle this, this sheer amount of tens of thousands of animals, sheltering them, and then the, the no-kill people became adamant that whatever the city did next, it had to be a no-kill shelter. Um, and so, the, the coalition of people who opposed what the SPCA did began to fall apart. There was no one in the coalition, um, except maybe for, uh, Mr. Ridenhour, uh, who, who really could bring, um, the kind of economic force to the table that we needed to, to take the next step. So, what happened was, with the, with the sand dripping through the, falling through the hourglass, um, the Swearingen administration went back and said, what will it take to make this better? What will it take to bring you back? Because we're unable to, I mean, like I said, millions of dollars a year ongoing, so, um, the, the city didn't have those resources at the height of the Great Recession, and they don't have them now. And so, um, the SPCA said, sure, we'll come back, give us another, you know, one and a half million dollars, and Mayor Swearingen had to, had to pay it. She had to pay it when we were, uh, losing employees, when we were laying people off. We had to pay the SPCA at our worst moment to come back. Now, the county went their own way. Supervisor Perea left those task force meetings in disgust with me, and with the city, and discussed with the members of the task force and the public, and he left. And the county went their own way, and they've gone through some awful growing pains, they hired a half-baked private entity to provide animal control in the county, but those people are now gone, uh, and there's a responsible group that's in there now that's doing a really good job for the county. Now, Mr. Ridenhour, I understand, is constructing a new facility for the county, uh, and for the animals. So, the city, with that gun to our heads, had, had no choice but to go back to the SPCA, and the county went their own way. They've been experiencing a great deal of, of growing pains, but I think they're gonna be okay. I mean, there's a huge difference. Uh, the county group doesn't take cats. The SPCA takes cats. So, they save money that way, and there are some other cost-saving measures that, uh, I don't know Brenda Mitchell's group, I don't know the name of the group that does, that provides, um, but, uh, they do things differently at the county. We need kind of a more, uh, hands-on, um, type of operation, simply because of the nature of the problem, the, the size of the problem that we're dealing with, but there's, there's no solution to this outside of lots and lots of money.
Mayor, uh, obviously, we all know the situation, or you said you, you're talking with the, the county and seeing what other possibilities there might be?
Yeah, we met last year, um, and as Clint has said, it's extremely expensive, you know, do you want the city to get involved? Finding the private provider is a major, uh, issue. One other way I looked at was to take a different approach to the problem. If you can get the problem at its inception, in other words, you have people doing spay and neuters on a regular basis, you shut down the puppy meals, the pit bulls and, and chihuahuas, and you'd have to have some people in code enforcement, you'd have to have the money for education, free or discounted spay and neuter. If you tack, attract, the, uh, tack the problem at its source, you don't have thousands of unwanted dogs. That's another way to look at it, and maybe ultimately, maybe, and that's one, one thing I'm looking at, too, because the SPCA, as I recall, they were willing to get out of the shelter part of it, just do the enforcement part of it. But if we can find a way, 'cause Fresno's a poor community, and there's a lot of people out there to just have their puppies and puppies and puppies, that if we can get people to understand there's costs to that, we can enforce illegal puppy meals, and educate people about getting spayed and neutered, then that's a way to go. One thing we, I looked at was our license fees. Only about, less than 20% of the people that own dogs, 'cause there's no, there's no license fee for cats, pay their fees. If we simply had a database to go to veterinarians on a public health basis and say, report all your vaccinations, we would actually get a database of people that own dogs, and the, the fee for, I think, a neutered dog is about $50 a year, it's, it's pretty reasonable. I figured we could raise four or $500,000. The problem I had a couple of years ago was that the money would've went to the SPCA, wouldn't help us out. But now we're looking at alternatives, and again, I would be glad to ask a couple of council members to join a task force, and I've already started a couple of months ago, to find a solution, so next year at this time, there's a viable alternative.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and, you know, I appreciate my, my colleagues' discussion on this issue. I think that it merits, um, the discussion that we've had over the last few years, and I, I can honestly say that I agree with, you know, the comments that were made by Councilmember Olivier. I've been a little frustrated as, as well, um, but it does feel like, you know, we just are up against a wall. What I would suggest is that, um, so that we also put a little bit of pressure on us to figure out if there's ever a plan B, that maybe we revisit this on a quarterly basis and see where we're at with the county, um, and where, where are we going, um, just because I'd hate this conversation to continue for four more years and to feel the same way, where we feel that, um, we can't even tell our taxpayers that, you know, because we can't look into the books of SPCA, who we give now would be over four million dollars to them, so, um, I think it's about accountability, and we owe it to our residents. And so, I think that, um...
Would you be open to adding that motion, if I support that motion, that we bring on a quarterly basis a report as to, you know, figuring out, so that we have some kind of plan B, or whatever the mayor is looking at, and we know?
I think the mayor would agree to do that, and that would be a part of the motion as well, to try to keep on top of this, but I just wanna remind everyone that the numbers I just heard were seven to 10 million dollars if we don't continue with the practice that we have now, so, uh, my community center is much more important than fooling with this stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. So, you, you're okay with that? Okay, so then, um, we'll go ahead and vote on the motion. There is a motion in a second.
Counsel, I just wanted to thank you all. That was a really great discussion. Thank all of you for your comments. Very thoughtful, thank you.
And I just wanna say, and I waited to after the vote to say this, next year if they ask for a million dollars, all you guys that voted, yeah, just vote yeah again.
You know, we have two council members that'll be leaving, so perhaps there's a new business opportunity.
Next, next motion will go, um, motion number seven. This is a motion to fund $11,000 for the implementation of an electronic digital signature to reduce time for signing contracts. Motion was made by Councilmember Baines, and I second that.
Yeah, Council President, thank you, and, and I'm gonna ask, I, I think this is okay, but the city attorney, the next couple of motions are, are mine, and they're all related to the city clerk. Is there a way for me to combine those motions?
Sure.
'Cause it's about 58,000...
You could treat them as one package.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to do that. I think, um, counsel knows we're either gonna support these or not, and I think it comes out to about $58,000, um, for the, the balance of these motions.
Member Baines, is it ongoing, or just one time? Some, some of these are one time, right?
These are one-time, uh, capital, basically like a capital improvement.
Okay.
Um, so, anyhow, that's my motion.
Looks like there's no further discussion? So, we're gonna go ahead, ta, take motion seven, eight, and nine as one motion, totaling a little bit over 58,000. I think it's 58,500. We'll go ahead and vote electronically. Motion carries 5-0 with Councilmember Caprillo and Councilmember Bretafell absent. We'll go on to the next motion. Um, made this motion is to fund a legal, one legal secretary and an additional litigation attorney. I made the motion, um, so I think it's pretty self-explanatory that when the city attorney, um, gave his presentation in terms of some of the needs. Um, Councilmember Brenda was the, uh, made the second. Any discussion?
Yes. Um, this is, is this from a wish list, or is this essential, city attorney? Can, can your office function without these people? Kind of, I missed your presentation, so if you could give me the, the 92nd version?
Well, some of our litigation attorneys have had to be reassigned to other work, criminal work, uh, working on PRAs, uh, those kinds of things, plus we just have more litigation. If we were to send this amount of litigation out, it would cost about $400,000 a year. So, if we add a lawyer and keep that work in-house instead, it saves at least $100,000. So, spending this 180 would save you another 100, and, and that's a conservative estimate, 'cause 1,600 hours of work at $250 an hour for outside counsel is $400,000. One lawyer in-house for less than half of that could do the same work.
So, we could do it cheaper in-house, and that's kind of why we decided to make that motion. Do you have any other questions? Appreciate. Looks like there's no further discussion. We'll go ahead and vote. Motion carries 5-1 with Councilmember Bretafell absent. Next motion is, uh, motion to allocate $100,000 to Parks for continued work on the mature adult center business plan, and to look at securing funds from state and federal sources and collaborating partners. Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, President Soria. So, this was really to keep the conversation going, um, I think with Councilmember Olivier's plan, that he put together this one-time funding for our Parks Department to, uh, get everybody in the room. And I've had a couple of conversations with Fresno Unified, and they are interested in the partnership. I know they already provide a substantial amount of resources for the programming, and this is really to, to kind of take that, that plan to the next level and explore the options of state, federal, um, and Fresno Unified dollars, uh, for our folks, and this is really to staff Parks Department to, to, to have that conversation with our partners. So, with that, uh, made the motion, and I think you seconded?
Thank you. So, looks like there's no further discussion? We'll go ahead and vote on the motion? Next, we'll go on to motion number 12. This is a motion for the administration to find an appropriate 200,000 for each council district infrastructure fund.
Can we clarify something with this motion? My notes indicate, um, that we've talked about adding an additional 150 per council district. Is that correct?
Was it 150 to the 50,000, so making it 200,000?
Yes, that's correct. Is that the motion, is that the motion that we're on right now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, but that's okay. Um, I just found that, um, in, in sometimes, and I don't necessarily mean all the time, but sometimes, uh, you know, Councilman Olivier's talking about his, his, uh, understanding of the way things work after eight years, and here I am at six years. So, in, in many situations, I think that when it comes to infrastructure dollars, almost some things can be executed quicker if the decision is just made at the council level. We've got the direct impulse of what's going on out in the district, and this wouldn't, to me, this doesn't apply to, you know, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars, but I, I do think it's beneficial for us to be able to direct and take care of some immediate needs, and I, and, uh, in this day and age, I just feel that that number could, should be closer to $200,000 than $50,000, so that was the reason for that motion.
Okay. To fund the senior center for three years, we could give up this $200,000 per district, and we could fund a senior center for three years? I don't know what it means.
Well, here's what it, here's what it means...
All I know is, I think I would rather see us, uh, provide a service to the seniors in our community, uh, than, than put $200,000 into our infrastructure budgets. That's just kind of where I'm at.
What about the building?
Um, that would cover the building. I mean, our Parks people are here, we could lease, uh, something, and that would cover it. They could do something really neat for $500,000 a year. The problem isn't the $500,000 for this year, the problem is ongoing. So, $500,000 times five is, is 2.5 million over five years. That's why the administration doesn't wanna do it, 'cause they don't have the money to do it. They do wanna do it, but they don't have the money to do it. So, they have to say no.
Yeah, the total cost of, yeah, the total cost of the motion of 150,000 times seven is a million fifty a year.
So, we could do the senior center for two years with that, and kick the can down the road, and you guys can find out how to fund it two years from now.
So, for me, those, those conversations don't have to be mutually exclusive anyway, but, um, what I would add...
Just putting it out there, I...
Yeah, yeah.
Councilmember Brandow?
Can I...
Councilmember Brenda, can I ask you just one question? So is your motion that this would be on, I, I, maybe I've misunderstood this, 2, 2.5 million over five years and all that? So you're, you're asking us to make that a permanent fix? I didn't think you were.
Councilman Caprillo.
Somehow it got a little confused.
Yeah. And, and on this, on these infrastructure dollars, I could see this ebb and flowing with the, with the economy. And we've done it, we've done it at some level every year. Last year, I added 100,000 dollars in parks. It had to be spent within parks. I think we've all made our individual decisions in our districts. That allows us the flexibility instead of trying to get seven people on one vision over here, which that needs to happen on other issues like community centers. But when you're talking about putting in a, a dog park or cleaning up an alleyway or fixing even more potholes than we've been allocated for so far, or trimming more trees than your allocation already calls for, you have the discretion to take care of it. You have a discretion. I don't have a lot of alleyways in District Two, but you, many of you have alleyways that need to be vacated and cleaned up and this allows you to go put out fires. And that's very important. I've found that it's very important. So, um, so I think 200,000, I know the amount of money. If I brought Scott up here and Aaron and some of the others, the amount of money that I've spent this year from my own infrastructure funds, I'm driving myself down to zero. I do believe in spend, I don't believe in sitting on the money. Other council members do. I spend it. We get these things done. We've done beautification projects. I've been blessed to be able to do some of those in Northwest Fresno and they take care of immense number of little fires and needs. So I don't think 200,000 dollars is too much to ask for that. And, but I'm glad that you asked the questions, cause it allows me to say it's one-time money. Next year, the council can have a completely different debate and maybe that number varies, you know, year, year to year.
A quick question. So the, the, it said motion says for the administration to find, so that has occurred. Where did that money come from? What, what was cut to put the money into our funds?
Waiting for the total motions, um, and to find out the total deficit that has to be covered. So we haven't actually found it yet. We're just waiting for the rest of the motions to be, to be, uh, voted upon and then we'll go back and, and look at our options to fund all of the, the things that have been approved.
Thank you.
Great. I think that, um, there seems to be no more...
Councilman Olivier, you know, I just want to add though that I believe in participating in that. So, you know, I have brought up, I've, I've brought up Fulton Street to take a look at that, uh, because we've got a brand-new street there that we're, the administration's asking for close to $800,000 at. But I didn't make that as part of the demand, but I'm trying to help, um, look at sources for the, for the motions that I'm making.
And I appreciate that. I know you're sincere and I, I know your heart is true and I know that, that you, um, you believe in the motion, you want to participate in that, so.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. But I'm not gonna support it.
All right.
So if...
But his heart is true. His heart is true.
Councilmember Olivier. So I propose if the motion, if the motion does pass, maybe you just donate your money back to the general fund so that the expense won't be... Just, just a thought.
That's fair.
That's fair.
Your heart would be true.
I think, I think that all the, from all that I have heard coming from this desk about senior citizens, I think that this body should jump to put that money into a senior center right now. So you call my bluff, I call your bluff. I think this money should go absolutely straight to a senior center.
So...
So Councilmember Olivier, you should make a motion to some effect about...
Oh, that's, it's coming. It's coming. It's just not the right time, but it's coming.
Okay, perfect. So seems like there's no more, no more discussion. We'll go ahead and vote. Motion carries six-one. We'll go on to motion 13. This motion is to move all sales tax money from August 2019, an estimated 9.9 million into the general funds emergency reserve fund. This motion was made by Councilmember Steve Brenda and seconded by Councilmember Olivier.
Oh, this one's seconded by Councilmember Olivier. That's gonna be interesting. No, perfect. Hey, um, so this is the 9.9 million dollars and I want to thank Wayne for helping, uh, discover this tool. Um, it caused a lot of consternation, I know, with the administration when it was discovered. Some people thought it was trying to be hidden. I don't believe that at all, not even for one second. But I was, uh, we directed that, uh, myself, the council president and Councilman Chavez were on phone calls to, um, Moody's and so forth to see if this was gonna make an impact to our credit rating. I was on that call with Moody's and they said, no, it would not make, um, one single event like this would not make an impact to our credit rating. They said that other cities do use this, this tool. Um, but then they went on to say that if it was put in the reserve fund, it could actually possibly, not for sure, cause nothing's for sure in their world, but if it would help us with, um, risk management and it could possibly help the city with the credit rating. So my motion, uh, takes all of that into effect. I believe the best use of that 9.9 million dollars is to go into the general funds emergency reserve.
And I was very happy to second. Thank you. I think your heart is true on this one, too, Steve.
Again, yeah.
All right. Anybody who opposes it, not so much.
Great. City Attorney, are you?
Yes, Counsel, because this is not a line item necessarily. It also entails changing the budget process itself or the resolution itself. We've drafted some language, uh, to effectuate that. If you'd like me to read it?
Is it just necessary to make this happen?
Yes, it just says we'll recognize the 2019 August revenue in fiscal 2019.
For that one year, right?
And then ongoing on the new schedule of 12 months from that point forward.
Okay. And the administration understands and agrees with that, having to make those changes?
Pardon me for the, for your motion? Do we support your motion? Is that what you're asking?
No, the motion requires some changing of the municipal co, is it the municipal?
It's the budget resolution.
The budget resolution, okay. So I would just include adopting that language in the budget motion.
That's, that's correct. And we're fine with that.
All right. I'll amend my motion to include that language.
Okay, so looks like no one else has punched up. I'm just gonna say a couple of comments before, um, we take the vote. So I know that we've had several conversations in terms of, um, you know, wanting to see other things being, um, spent and we've obviously taken motion. So what I'm gonna do, I'm not gonna support this motion. I think there's another motion, um, below, but I will be offering maybe a potential amendment. While I do believe that it's important that we build our reserve, I think that Councilmember Brenda stated it well. Moody didn't s- say that if we put the entire 9.9 million, that we would significantly increase our rating or anything like that. Um, so I'd like to reserve my support to kind of explore, um, an additional option and potentially sit down with the administration and, um, the mayor and the manager to kind of figure out that 9.9 and also, um, the additional dollars that are happening with the reserves. So I'll make a motion after, there's a couple of other motions that are related to this money, but for that reason, I won't be supportive at this point of just allocating everything to the reserve, but open to, to it.
I punched up.
Oh, Councilmember Caprillo, sorry.
Thank you. Uh, it might be better if we just set it over to a Thursday meeting to review it. I, the language that was just recited, I haven't reviewed that yet and I'd like to look that over before I cast a vote to see how this works into our budget, not just this year, but in future years. So I need, uh, I need some time to look at that. So my, my position would be, let's set it over a week and then we can discuss this at the, uh, end of the day. We'll do our final motions.
Are you, um, opposed to continuing eh, as part of the discussion before we vote for the entire budget?
For a completely different reason, though. Um, so I really think that if we set it o, this decision over to next week, even if you reject my motion, I think we need to deal with the direction of the council today. Because if we try to do all of this next week, we can find ourselves in jams that it would be difficult to get out of, just for lack of time's sake. Cause next Thursday is the drop dead day. And I would almost rather you say, Councilman, that you can't do it today and then we can look at other motions and then re-tackle it next week. But, but let me add this, Paul, that the language that Doug just wants to insert is essentially just cleanup language. And pop, if you want him to go through it, it's probably simple enough that you would just gr, being an attorney, you'd just grab a hold of it real quick. It's not, doesn't change anything else. It just adds the language that allows this to happen. So I don't think it's that big a deal, but that's why I cut him off. You know, that's why I cut him off. But it's really just cleanup language that would allow this to happen, but it's gonna have to be the same thing on the other budget motions that deal with this, right? So we're gonna have to deal with that cleanup language anyway. If that's your major concern, I think we still need to deal with that today. So I don't see that as being a good reason to, to move this to next Thursday.
That wasn't my reasoning. That was Councilmember Caprillo's. My, I'm opposing it for a different, for a different reason. I think that...
Yeah, I got it.
So I think that we need to have further discussions and I'll make a separate motion once I get to...
I understand, but then, do you, but I hope that you guys, that, I hope that, I don't want to lecture anybody. Next Thursday will be our last day and usually we'd like to be able to present the whole budget, make some last-minute adjustments if they come up. But if we kick off a 9.9 million dollar discussion till the final day, it could get very sketchy and so...
And why can't we just have the discussion now?
Well, I think we're gonna have to, really. Yeah.
I think what I'm hearing is that we're...
Okay, well, let's ju, let's just have, uh, uh, sorry, Councilmember Baines, you were next.
Yeah, and let me just say this for all clarity's sake. If we look at the budget motions, Councilmember Brenda, Councilmember Chavez has a motion that's a little more comprehensive than yours, um, in my opinion. And I'm supportive of, of a more comprehensive motion. So, uh, I, I, I think if you guys want to put it off until Thursday, that's fine. I don't think that we're not gonna deal with this issue. And candidly, I don't think that there's much daylight on what the council wants to do with the 9.9 million dollars. I'll be honest with you. I think that there's probably some, some pretty solid agreement on that for the most part. The, the other RDA money gets, there, there are different, there are different feelings about that, to be fair. So I think what, what's not being said is that, uh, Councilmembers Chavez and, and Soria want to work with the administration and see if there's a, there's a way to get some, uh, some agreement. So, uh, just to, just to put all in the right context, I don't think that we're not dealing with it or anything like that. It's just, you know, the 9.9 million is, is probably closer than the other money.
So multiple things could happen. Councilman Chavez, if you're truly sa, if you're truly saying that there's no big debate on the 9.9 million, maybe with perhaps, um, the exception of the council president, then we could vote on that now. And Councilman Chavez's motion, then you could defeat that, my next motion, which would be about the 3.5. And Councilman Chavez could just make his motion about the 3.5, which is what you're telling me where the discussion truly is at. And so we could, and all, and I'm gonna be fine, trust me. I'm gonna be fine with whatever decisions are made. Um, like I said, and I have not been out trying to gain support or, or oppose anything. You guys know that. But I do think by the end of today, we should have direction on what we want to do and then that, it gives us a week of discussion before we have a final, yeah. And so...
Well, we'll go ahead and take a vote on your motion. Yeah, that's fine. We'll go ahead and, and, and vote. So there is a, a motion and a second. The motion is to allocate the entire 9.9 million from the August 2009 sales tax revenues all for general reserve. So the motion, um, fails with three, three to two and one abstention, or two abstentions.
But it, it needs four votes to pass or can it pass with just three, City Attorney?
Next motion, motion 14. Motion to move all RDA repayment monies to be received from fiscal year 19. The estimated is 3.5 million into a down payment for fire station 18 west of Highway 99.
And, and so that was, it can be looked at completely separate from the last motion with, except that, um, we need, we need to deal with the 9.9. If the 9.9 is put into the emergency reserve fund, then it frees up the 3.5 that was going to be put into that fund. And, um, my thoughts were that that 3.5 could be used for a fire station. I went over this last week, so I'm not gonna go over it again today. A, a fire station that would conquer a major problem that we've got west of 99 and, um, a public safety concern for our citizens out there. I think it's a good use of money, so that's why I made that motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Brenda. Councilmember Olivier.
Member Brenda, can't you just amend the motion to, to effectively do what Member Chavez is doing with his motion? Just, can that motion be amended to say, to include, just add 13 to motion 14?
No.
We can't do that?
Wait a second, add 13?
Yeah, just add what just failed into 14. So they're both accounted for.
Totally, we could, but I think you're misreading our col, our colleagues, okay? So, so, so I don't want to, I don't need to do that again. I don't, I, I, I've never had a problem having motions defeated or, or going down on votes.
Sure, but may, maybe, maybe one or two of them might want to build the fire station and put the 9.9, I mean, give them that, give them that option. I mean...
No, if I'm hearing my colleagues...
This is gonna fail because they want infrastructure dollars.
Well, if, if I'm hearing my colleagues correctly, there's not that much debate about the 9.9 million and, um, I mean, so the debate really does come out about the one we're talking about now, so I don't feel the need to try to add that back in. Um, we'll just, if it gets defeated, we'll move on to Councilman Chavez's motion.
Because, Member Brenda, I don't think I would support this item for the fire station unless I knew that the 9.9 was safely tucked away in the, in the reserves. Then we've, then we voted to, to do a fire station and, and...
Member Olivier, that 3.5 is like a down payment. I think the estimates were up to 11 million and who knows when and O and M and all this sort of stuff.
It's not 11 million, is it?
It could be up to, I'm saying. We don't know.
No, we're estimating between six and seven million, as I stated earlier this week.
Uh, plus O and M.
Well...
Oh, because that's already existing at fire station, the existing fire station 18.
You mean the house?
So, did you have further questions, Councilmember Olivier? Are, are you gonna still second?
Counsel, to my colleagues, I understand finally where Councilman Olivier's going. He cannot deal with RDA money without the other. I have the feeling, uh, I have the feeling that I know where my colleagues are at. But I am gonna amend it to, just to help him and then you, then you can vote no, okay? All right. I'll amend it, um, city clerk to include the previous motion as well. So we're hearing, uh, the 9.9 million go into the general emergency reserve fund and then the 3.5 to be used as a down payment on a fire station.
Okay, so your motion has been amended. Are you okay with that? So Councilmember Olivier, and I just want to add, you know, one comment because this fire station is in, in my district and so I am very supportive of getting this fire station built. However, I disagree in terms of the mechanism and how we do it in terms of the funding. Um, so for those reasons, I'm not gonna be able to support it. If, if you, and I would be actually very supportive if you want to look into the 9.9 million rather than tucking it away. Um, we obviously have a great need in our city and we're saying, we're seeing that it is a one-time spending, which is what Moody said. If you guys want to spend it in a one-time, that they would be, you know, that's the recommendation. So I would be very supportive, just so everyone knows, very supportive of building the fire station if we were able to look at that 9.9 million as a potential source for the, for these funds. So we'll go ahead and vote electronically. So one, two, three. So motion fails. Was it two, three yeses and two noes, two abstentions? Next motion, motion... Next motion, motion 15, which is motion to move estimated 9.9 million, um, in the August 2009 sales tax into the reserve fund, and move the estimated 3.5 million general fund reserve revenues across each council district's infrastructure fund. This motion was made by, um, Councilmember Chavez, seconded by Councilmember, um, Baines.
Thank you, President Soria. Um, yeah, I made this motion, I, I, I think this is, this will be a good compromise for, um, my, you know, my colleagues, uh, putting the 9.9 million into the reserve, but I know that there's been some conversations, and, and I know that there was some will of the council to, uh, modify that a bit, so I'd love to hear what you have to say.
Um, yes, um, Councilmember Chavez, so what I wanted to do, I wanted to take a little bit of more time, um, to figure out and have that discussion about the 3.5 million, so I'd like to amend your motion, um, to create a subcommittee. Um, the subcommittee can include yourself, myself, and, um, Councilmember Caprillo, um, to meet with the administration, um, the city manager and the staff to kinda sort those things out, um, before coming back with the final vote of the budget.
I'm fine with that.
The second, uh, great, so, um, we're amending the motion, and Councilmember Baines agrees with that motion. Councilmember Olivier.
Can you repeat the, the amendment to the motion, please?
So, we're gonna hold off in essentially voting on this motion, um, and creating a subcommittee. Subcommittee would include Councilmember Chavez, Councilmember Caprillo, and myself to meet with the administration and, um, figure out the 3.5 million and the whole 9 million that is outstanding, that we've been discussing. Councilmember Bretafell.
Yeah, um, I'm unclear, the subcommittee, the purpose, I mean, why are we just not addressing it out here now? I mean, what, what are you hoping to, to gain from having that kinda dialogue?
I, I think that originally, we had talked about, um, splitting the, the monies, right, for our own districts. We already took a motion earlier that passed, that we're allocating $150,000 in terms of infrastructure, so this will give us an opportunity to see if there's other things, rather than just going towards our own budgets. So, that's why I, we're asking for the extra time. Councilmember Olivier.
Yeah, um, I, I just have a quick question. I think we probably have unspent money from, in our council budgets. Um, I guess for somebody, is there, is there any carryover for Councilmember Infrastructure budgets? Is there, what, how much, how much are we carrying over that the council members have not spent?
I think a total, um, of about, uh, between their parks UGM and their infrastructure budgets, I think it's about 2 million.
Approximately.
Yeah, about 2 million.
Okay. Well, that's a lot of money that we have not spent yet. Um, that's, that's-
Which, which goes to my point to say that we need a little bit additional time to figure out, because we don't know if we're gonna do, if we would move just to allocate an, an additional half a million, since, one, we voted on the 150, additional 150,000 for infrastructure. So, that's why we want to be able to further discuss. So, there's a motion on-
I, I just have another, if, so there's gonna be a delegation of three like-minded council members to go to the administration and ask, find out what needs money, like, what needs to be spent on?
Let me chime in. So, Councilmember Olivier, just for clarification, so the purpose of the subcommittee is to identify specific projects in each council district, that, that, those resources would be allocated. So, you might have different needs in District 7, so would Councilmember Bretafell. That's the purpose of the subcommittee, to iron that out. The other option is that we just get the 500,000, and then each council member respectively just outlines where they would like it spent. I think the more prudent approach would be to actually identify some specific projects, and we have been in conversations.
So, does, does this motion include the, putting the sales tax accrual in the reserves immediately? And cre, and the creation of a, and the creation of a-
That's part of the motion.
So, it is? So, if, if this passes today-
When we bring it back.
Oh, it has to come back?
Correct.
But is it the intention of the members of the committee to try and find a way to allocate some of the sales tax accrual as well?
I think there's a-
Cause I, I won't be able to support, I, I wanna find a way to help my colleagues and help support, but I'm not gonna be able to do that if, if the, I mean, I, I take you at face value, but I wanna know right now, is it part of the subcommittee's intention to try to find a way to spend the sales tax accrual as well? Is that part of it? Is that on the table as well?
My approach is for the, the 500,000. That's my approach. I'm one of seven, so. And, and if you're not comfortable with it, and when it comes back, you can vote no. I mean, that's totally your prerogative.
Okay. The, the other thing that, that I would submit is, I, I know of something, I think that it's important, in this form of government, I think it's important to know when to wear your district hat and know when to wear your citywide hat. And it, it seems, I'm just gonna wait till everybody comes back to their seats before I continue.
As part of the budget, can we, uh, budget some paper towels for when council members spill Coca-Cola on their desks, too?
Um, I think that, I think I would ask council, I think to earn my support, I think we should have a 7-0. I think we should, I think we should dedicate the sales tax accrual and put it in the reserves, and I think we should take the 3.5, and I think that we should put it, invest it into something that we can all get behind, invest it into something that I've heard from this dais a number of times, from every single, uh, council member who sits up here, and that's the need for Senior Citizens Center in the city of Fresno. And I have heard, and I, I, I don't wanna put anyone on the spot, but I've heard things like, this is the most important thing we can do for our city. This is the most important thing we can do, besides public safety, for our city, for the retired citizens of the, of Fresno. I've heard it many times. The senior task force completed six months of work and came forward with a white paper. And then, our Parks Department spent months and months coming up with a business plan. City Council and administration, we are ready. We are ready to deliver on the promises each one of us have made to our seniors. So, is, is, is this now, i- is this an opportunity for us to say, you know what, we'll take our district hats off, yeah, we all need tree trim, yeah, we all need paving, yeah, we all need, and deliver on something that we've, that we've paid so much, myself included, we've all paid so much lip service to our senior citizens community in the city, and we're so close. So, if we can't compromise, the, the fire station is not the direction this council wants to go in, could a Senior Citizens Center be the direction that the council wants to go in? And I would hope the answer would be yes. So, I guess my question for the maker of the motion, would you be interested in the, the 3.5 million, or 2.5 million funds of senior center, I think Parvin was talking to, and Sean, for five years? Would the maker of the motion, and I think he could probably get a 7-0 vote right now to deliver on the promises that we've been making to our seniors? So, would the maker of the motion be willing, and I think he'd get a 7-0 vote, by taking that second part of money out of what it says on this piece of paper, to put money into infrastructure funds, and fund a senior center in Fresno for five years? That would be my, that would be my request, and we would, I promise we'd get a 7-0 vote on that.
Well, then maybe you can make a motion on that, but I'd like a vote on my motion first.
Thank you. Councilmember Caprillo?
Just clarification, uh, my, uh, my, uh, offer was to complete the community center in District 4, as we all know, and I've said it a thousand times, that I don't have one. So, uh, I would urge you to join forces with District 4, and make a Clint Olivier Senior Center room, or building, or annex to a community center in District 4. I'd have to have that before I could support a motion that you're suggesting, cause I've never promised that in and of itself as a standalone building. Nothing against seniors, but I have to take care of my children, uh, people of all ages in District 4 before I can isolate and do a standalone for seniors, so that, that's just what I, what you'd understand, and I appreciate what you're doing. Uh, there's seniors on this dais. Uh, my mom's 91 years old, she loved to get a senior hot meal or hang out at the senior center, but, uh, I have to get that community center first, which those people can still enjoy and come and participate, once we get it done in District 4, so, just, uh, for the clarification, just wanna let you know how I feel about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bretafell?
Yeah, um, again, I asked about the, the committee, I, I think I'm not gonna support this, cause I, I'm not sure this is the best way we should be doing this. I frankly like the idea of using the 3.5 million dollars for the fire station. Uh, I think it ought to be something that benefits the entire city, and obviously, public safety is our number one priority, and we need that fire station, and in order for the growth area to take place, and we need the growth, gotta have the fire station there as well. That's, that's incumbent upon that to happen. I think when we start getting down to, and breaking down this into seven pots, I think we're gonna run into trouble. I think we already have almost $200,000 that we're gonna be able to utilize, there's other monies that aren't being spent, that we need to spend, uh, for our citizens. Um, so I think we're moving in the wrong direction, that's why I won't support it, and, and I implore the council, to let's, let's get the fire station that we all know needs to happen.
Councilmember Olivier?
I guess my final, um, I would, I would ask council, and even the maker of the motion as well, I would ask, um, I would ask for a no vote, and I would ask that we reset after this vote, and that we move forward. If, I mean, the seniors aren't here today. If the seniors were here today, I think we'd have a different result, but they're not here today. And I wish they were, because I think it would be great to have, you know, 75, 80 of them with waving signs and, and, and demanding that we act. They're the ones that have been paying taxes and, and working and doing so much for our city for decades and decades. And all due respect, Councilmember Caprillo, you are a fantastic advocate for a community center in your district. You're, you're, you're doing very, very good work, you don't stop, you're a great advocate for that. But, I don't see 85, 100 people in here waving signs and demanding a community center in District 4. The seniors, if we, if you and I have to compromise, and we put the senior center in your district, I say, let's do that. But the, the, the seniors come here regularly, and, and yes, thank you, we all voted $100,000 for the seniors, but it's, it's, it's not- council colleagues, I'm, I'm, I'm a little disheartened, because the, the mood and the words that, that we're all choosing, uh, as we address the issue of a senior center are different today than they were when this gallery was full of seniors. And so, my request of you is, and even to the maker of this motion, I have not seen this gallery full of people demanding that we put hundreds of thousands of dollars in our infrastructure funds, but I have seen this gallery full of senior citizens demanding that we address their needs. And so, I'm saying that maybe, Member Chavez, you wanna vote? I appreciate that, we're gonna vote. But I'm saying, if it fails, let's come back and let's deliver. There's been a white paper, there's been a task force, our Parks Department has, it's ready to go, folks, it's ready to go. Let's execute that.
Councilmember Olivier, I just wanna remind you that, the day that the seniors were here, you didn't say anything about making a motion about this, and so that was the opportunity to make that, and you did not. I had to step in and do that. What's the difference?
The, the difference is, is that $100,000 does not even begin to address their needs. So, you can grandstand, and you can talk about how you came in-
Not grandstanding.
No, you put me down, and you grandstanding, over $100,000.
I call for the question.
Uh, I, I do have a comment. I mean, I haven't-
We call-
I punched in, tried to punch in.
Okay, well, I'll give you the, yes, your, your thing was not working, so I'll give you the last, but we will be taking a vote immediately after your comment.
Okay, so, I guess my first question is, Councilman Chavez, what is the, what's the motion as it currently stands? Is it originally written, or has it been amended?
It's, it's with the amendment that Councilmember Soria made.
Please remind me, a committee that's to meet in the next six days or so? Okay. Um, all right, so, and, and that's fine, cause I'm subject to my colleagues. Uh, my concerns are that, um, we'll find ourselves in, in almost the same type of thing again next week. I'm a little, I'd rather take votes and then see what does or doesn't work, and then, then we know, then when that committee meets, you kinda know, that's not gonna work. So, I would be, I'd almost like to vote on your motion to, today, as you presented it, and then, and then somebody make a motion to create the committee, and that could even be the two of you again. And I, so I'm not against the committee, but I'd love to, let's take some votes, see what gets eliminated, like, for instance, the fire station, and then we can move on. I, I wanna go, but I wanna go all the way back to the 9.9 million, and I'm gonna say, say it for all my colleagues, whatever iteration comes out, I'm only, I'm only gonna support a motion that puts the whole point, 9.9 million in the reserve. And, um, then the 3.5 worthy of debate, personally, at this point, I would like to see the 9.9 voted on. I made that motion, I don't have to make it again. Somebody else wants to make it, I'd love to get that off the table today, okay? Cause then, we can start talking cleanly about the 3.5. City Manager, any-
We're, we're gonna go ahead, we call, there's a call for the vote?
Um, but I would like to, since, since Councilmember Brando asked, so, we are supportive of working with the council, but, but we are adamant that the 9.9, or whatever it ends up being, go into the general fund, uh, Emergency Reserve Fund.
Thank you. So, we'll call for the questions, so we can take an electronic vote. Um, there's a motion and a second to the amend, and it was amended. Motion carries 4-3. Those are all the motions that we have, um, that have been made up to-
No, you have one more.
Oh, wait. Oh, yeah, my motion. So, my motion to make the election contingency money, which is allocated within the District 1 budget, out of, um, take it out of contingency and back to my District 1 budget, since I was elected, re-elected in Ju, on June. Um, so I have a motion and a second, we'll can, any discussion? We'll vote electronically. Motion carries 7-0, thank you. Now, um, those are all the motions that were made previous to today, um, if folks wanna make additional motions.
I would like to make an additional motion.
This is your time.
I'd like to make a motion to, to move all 9.9 million dollars. I'm gonna repeat my motion of 13, so I'm gonna read it again. Motion to move all sales tax monies from August 2019, estimated 9.9 million, into the general funds Emergency Reserve Fund.
City Manager, if that motion has been made in it, or City, yeah, City Attorney, sorry. If that motion has been made and it failed, can it come back again?
Well, it could, but there's already been another motion that's accounted for the 9.9 million. The, the motion that you just voted on-
Yeah, but, but, well, let me take it a step further. I, I'm not sure it can come back if it's the same exact motion without somebody, without a reconsideration from somebody that voted against it. We actually voted on that very same motion, you just made it again.
Then we had a ton of discussion.
But we voted on your motion, though, unless you're changing the motion.
No, it's okay, we'll, we'll let it go.
Great. Any additional motions or comments? Great, so we will adjourn today, and we will adjourn in memory of-
Nick, help me out, Louis, you wanna say-
It was the barber, Nick, what?
Palomar.
Palomar, Nick Palomar, the barber at the airport.
Before we adjourn, City Attorney, can you please clarify that the motion number 14, or 15? Yes, number 15, can you please clarify what council just voted on?
Motion 15 was to recognize the August 2019 sales tax revenue in the FY19 budget, and allocate all of those funds, whatever they may actually be, into the general fund reserve, and then the council would have a committee to meet with the administration to discuss what to do with the 3.5 million dollars of RDA debt repayment money. Is that correct?
We modified it, remember? So, my modification was that upon coming back to the council, I mean, coming back after meeting with the subcommittee, we would make-
For the 3.5 portion of it? Or are you talking about all of it?
Everything.
Oh, okay. I did not understand.
Yes, that was the motion.
So, the committee is looking at the 9.9 as well as the 3.5?
We'll, we'll come back with everything.
Okay.
Yes.